Getting up here at the desk, we'll go ahead and get this, uh, get this poor thing started. Welcome to, oh wow. I'm sure our guys in the back are working on it right now, trying to figure it all out. We're gonna get the, uh, are we recording anyway?
Yeah.
We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting of the Board of Supervisors for February 24th, 2015, and we will begin with a flag salute led by Supervisor Wiegand. Please stand and join us.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the reason for the flurry of activity here is we're trying something for the first time. We are in an effort to continue to expand access for folks throughout the county to what we do here in the board chambers and kinda continuing with this theme of transparency and all those other fun things we mentioned a couple weeks ago, that agendas are now available for public review six days in advance of the board meeting. Tremendous improvement from what had historically been, and we're only required to be 72 hours. We are now establishing video and audio linkage with Tahoe, so that people up in Tahoe, because the board does get up to Tahoe to meet on a fairly regular basis, about three times a year, to try to take up Tahoe-related items up there, but the nature of business being what it is and the very condensed building season that you have up in Tahoe means that sometimes our board needs to take action on items that impact Tahoe without necessarily waiting for a Tahoe meeting. So this is an effort to give the folks up in Tahoe the opportunity to participate in this board meeting without having to drive through all the snow.
(laughing)
Well, anyway, to participate in the meeting, so. So, that's, uh, that's what we're seeing here, and, uh, and so what we'll do as we go through the board meeting is, as items come up, we will ask for public comment here, we will ask for public comment from the folks in Tahoe, and then we'll go about doing our business the way we normally do it. So with that, Ann, if you'll go ahead and read the statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, February 24th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. (laughing) We continue on with consent, any items on consent, any board members would like removed for discussion? I see none. Any member of the public in Auburn have anything they would like taken off of consent for discussion? Seeing none, anybody in Tahoe have anything that they would like taken off of consent for discussion? I'll take that as a no. Okay. With that, do we have a motion on consent? We have a motion, Duran, second Montgomery, can we have a roll call, please?
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Youler. Aye, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to public comment. This is a time when any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. We ask that as you step forward, you please identify yourself, try to keep your remarks to three minutes. Thank you very much. Good morning.
My name is Eleanor Petuski, I live in Newcastle, I am a taxpaying member of Placer County, and I am somebody that uses the senior center up at DeWitt. And I am here this morning to ask the board to consider, to put a moratorium on tearing down anything at the DeWitt Center now that Costco has backed out of their project. And, um, I was interested to read, uh, about the university. I saw Mr. Duran and you at the, in the pictures, and, uh, City Councilman Tim Herman said, "I believe the addition of the University of Warwick to Placer County will improve our quality of life for generations to come." And, uh, the DeWitt property belongs to the people of Placer County. And, I can't see where a big box store improves our quality of life particularly, but I can see that property improving our quality of life in many, many ways. And I know for a fact that the board has approved a senior housing, uh, up in, off of Bell Road, Timberlake, I believe, and it's gonna be 858 units. And basically, the senior center is supposed to disappear. And I don't think that's improving anybody's quality of life. And I want to see the public included in the decisions of what happens to that property. I can see some of it going into, to ARD for parks, for recreation, for all kinds of things. And, uh, last time I was here, one of the supervisors made the comment that they thought the Costco projects passed the smell test. Well, I don't think it does, and I think the county needs to back off, stop throwing businesses and, you know, services to the people out of that area until something is done. I'm very familiar with the Auburn Bowman Plan, and from what I understand, it has been completely blown off by the Board of Supervisors. So I think it's time that you guys backtrack, and you include the people of Placer County in the planning for our property. And, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Michael Coder. I'm a board member on the nonprofit organization Music &amp; More Performing Visual Arts, and we have the DeWitt Theater. I submitted a letter on February 13th to Mary Dietrich from Facility Services. Um, I have not heard a response, and, uh, so I'm here today to read my letter briefly. In light of the recent developments with the Costco wholesale termination of the option agreement with Placer County, Music &amp; More Arts Academy is applying for a 12-month lease extension of our current lease beyond June 30th, 2015, for the DeWitt Theater, or until disposition of the property is determined. I understand that SECO can extend like a year and a half or beyond. We believe that this is an opportunity to rethink the future of the DeWitt Center, and we are still considering all options for our nonprofit organization. If we're going to invest in the DeWitt Theater building, we need to room to grow. If the multipurpose senior center vacates and moves to a new location, we would like the opportunity to expand our operation into their building adjacent to the DeWitt Theater. We believe it will be financially benefit to Placer County to rent the property as long as possible, enable our nonprofit organization to book use of the theater 12 months ahead, and allow us to, an opportunity to continue to serve the nearby schools and young people in music and visual and performing arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning Chair Yuler, members of the board. At this moment, I'd like to introduce to you Linda Patterson, our new Human Services Director. Linda, would you like to stand up? So Linda has over 30 years of human services experience. She most recently was the Chief of the CalFresh Program with the State of California, and coincidentally, she began her career many years ago with Placer County, so please join me in welcoming Linda back to Placer County.
Welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I'm Kevin Hanley, CEO of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I'm sure you've heard that owning a winery is a surefire way to make a small fortune. All you need to do is start off with a large fortune. And the winery owners that I've talked to along the Placer County Wine Trail say that it takes 10 to 15 years to make a profit on the wineries. Your staff reported to your planning commission in November that when they compared Placer County's wine ordinance with Amador, Sacramento, and Santa Barbara, that the Placer County ordinance is more restrictive than those ordinances as far as events, the selling of wine by the glass or bottle, even by the standards of state law. And right now, Amador County has 4,000 acres in wine vineyard production, Eldorado 2,500, and Placer County 211 acres. And before prohibition, we had thousands of acres here in wine vineyard cultivation. The Auburn Board of Directors took a position to endorse the vintners' recommendations to make your ordinance less restrictive, allow the wineries to hold more events, and make a little money on their property, because the only way we're gonna preserve the beautiful working landscapes from Auburn to Lincoln and the, on the, along the wine trail, is to allow them to make some money. So we would urge, as the, as the planning commission holds its fifth workshop on the ordinance this Thursday, that the Board of Supervisors support a more flexible ordinance to preserve the local agriculture. And I sent a letter to the board members last month. If you haven't received the letter, I'd be happy providing another copy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else in a public comment in Auburn? Okay, is there anybody that wishes to address the board on the public comment in Tahoe? Good morning, Ms. Waller.
Good morning. Good morning, Board Members and public in Auburn. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak in Tahoe and hope this is a successful program for us up here. I recently attended two area plan process update meetings, and there'll be another one this evening. I'm looking forward to robust discussions in the future with your board and staff members and the planning commission. I was a little disappointed to hear that Tahoe Vista, Carmillion Bay, and the West Shore will essentially have to wait an additional 18 months before we will get to really have some meat in our plans. We've been told that the non-town center areas will essentially be using the 20-year community plan baselines that we have now and the plan area statements, they'll just be cut and paste into the new area plans that are going forward. I completely understand that the regional plan is focusing on town centers, but still disappointed that some of the controversial amendments that are gonna be brought forward that could also benefit the non-town center areas won't be applicable at this time. I urge you, and still believe, that four separate area plans could track individually and be just as successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in Tahoe interested in commenting? Seeing nobody jumping into the chair, we'll go ahead and assume that public comment in Tahoe is taken care of, and we will be done with public comment, move on to supervisor committee reports. Any board member have anything to report? Supervisor Montgomery, your light is on.
Yes, and mine is not actually a committee report, but I really wanted to, in light of Ellie's comments, just take the opportunity to thank the county staff that pulled this together. It's something that took a lot of thinking outside the box, and I'm just delighted to see that it's working. So here in Auburn, I wanted to thank Jeremy, Greg, and Dieter, who worked just tirelessly to make sure this works. Uh, I think Tom, we saw earlier, and then Jennifer Merchant on the Tahoe end have been really involved in making this work, and I just truly wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for making our government more transparent, open, and obviously interactive. So, ooh, and now it's the Board of Supervisors, so, thank you. I probably just cursed it. But, thank you.
All right. And then, anybody down there? Jack?
Yeah, I was just going to say that after, what, Kirk, 15 years?
Yep.
It's been 15 years.
Yep.
And I know Kirk was on the board, and Robert was on the board.
Actually, Robert was, I wasn't in the initiation.
At the time that the regional university project was presented to the Board of Supervisors, and after several permutations of different universities, we finally have a commitment from the University of Warwick, uh, from England, one of the top 10 universities, both in England as well as internationally, are, have made a commitment to Placer County. Kirk and I attended the welcoming of officials from Warwick yesterday at the state capitol. Kirk made a very eloquent speech with regards to the commitment and the process and what it means to Placer County. So I just wanted to report that it was a very interesting and timely event, and I look forward to, as well as the rest of the board, to assisting our region to embrace this opportunity and fully develop it, so.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, seeing no other lights, we'll go ahead and move on from supervisor committee reports. We'll take up department item number four, which is simple approval of the minutes of our January 20 meeting. Do we have a motion?
(inaudible).
We have a motion by Montgomery, second by Holmes. Roll call, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Sir.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Youler?
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, moving into our facility services item, this is property management related in regard to our ongoing conversations up in South Lake Tahoe and the acquisition, possibly, of some property up there. Nope, you need to push it again. You had it on, then shuff, there you go. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. My name is Suzie Voss, and I'm a Senior Project Manager in the Property Management Division. I'm pleased to be here to recommend your board's consideration and approval of the acquisition of A&amp;A Motel located in South Lake Tahoe. The actions requested of your board today are as follows. Approve the acquisition of the A&amp;A Motel, also known as the Lake Tahoe Inn, located at 3520 Lake Tahoe Boulevard, South Lake Tahoe, from WBW Property Holdings Corporation, at a purchase price of $1,425,000. Adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services, or designee, to execute the agreement of purchase and sale, and to execute all other documents and take all other actions necessary to complete the acquisition based upon the attached material terms. Approve a budget revision, shifting $1,557,850 in appropriations from Capital Project 4907, Miscellaneous Projects, to a new Capital Project 4961, A&amp;A Motel acquisition. Authorize the real property to be added to the master fixed asset list following the close of escrow. With me today to make this presentation is Jennifer Merchant, Deputy CEO for Placer County in Lake Tahoe. Jennifer will outline the background, purpose, and justification for the acquisition of the A&amp;A Motel.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jennifer here. The purchase of the motel property before you today will result in environmental and economic benefits in eastern Placer County and in the Tahoe Basin. In order to protect and improve the environmental quality of Lake Tahoe, the TRPA, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, limited the total number of hotel and motel units in the Tahoe Basin to those existing in 1987. In order for new lodging to be built, old motels must be torn down and the tourist accommodation units, or TAUs, from those old motels transferred to the new motel properties. Dozens of older blighted motel properties exist at South Lake Tahoe, many on environmentally sensitive lands. One of TRPA's environmental goals is to remove those motels, restore the land, and replace the old units, or TAUs, in centrally located downtown areas in order to improve pedestrian transit-oriented mixed-use development, including lodging, retail, and restaurants. Little investment has been made within the Placer County portion of the Tahoe Basin since the 1960s. Many motels in Tahoe City and Kings Beach do not meet today's market standards, and Placer County, now without a redevelopment agency to take these projects on, is considering a more active economic development role. If purchased, the properties would ultimately be demolished, the land restored to its original native condition, and the TAUs banked by Placer County for allocation to incentivize investment in Tahoe City and Kings Beach lodging product. At your board's direction last July, we engaged the services of Economic and Planning Systems to investigate factors contributing to the lack of investment in the Tahoe Basin. Preliminary findings of a report titled "Economic Development Incentives for North Lake Tahoe Town Centers" were presented to your board in October. That include heightened investment risk due to some key factors in the Tahoe Basin: a complex and lengthy entitlement process, costs associated with parking, mixed-use, and lodging projects, and the cost and risk associated with acquiring the necessary commodities prior to implementation, predominantly tourist accommodation units. The report also identifies that over the next 20 years, between 300 and 500 new or redeveloped lodging units are needed to meet market demand and standards. This includes redevelopment of units already existing in Tahoe City and Kings Beach. If acquired, the units proposed through the motel acquisition recommended today would meet a percentage of Placer County's future need. The findings in the report, along with recommendations to be prioritized for further analysis and implementation, have since been further refined in a final report to be presented for your board's acceptance during a separate item on today's agenda. Preliminary conversations with agencies that regulate or assist in implementing the SEZ Restoration and Commodity Transfer Program show support for moving forward with the property purchase, restoration, and TAU transfer that we're proposing today. TRPA has already initiated one code change to ensure bonus unit commodities needed to facilitate the purchase and transfer of TAUs. Its governing board is expected to consider an additional code change in March or April to continue further analysis to resolve other existing impediments in the coming months. While staff has initially anticipated bringing forward two properties for your board's consideration in December, after further discussion with the City of South Lake Tahoe, we have determined that the property before you today best suits our shared environmental and economic interests. Back to Suzie.
Thanks, Jennifer. Staffed worked with Brad Hester of Hester Real Estate Tahoe Properties to investigate several hotel motel properties in South Lake Tahoe, considered likely to be within a stream environment zone, and identified this 34-unit motel as a likely candidate for acquisition. Known as the A&amp;A Motel and also as the Lake Tahoe Inn, this property is located at 3520 Lake Tahoe Boulevard, South Lake Tahoe, in Eldorado County. Its location along the main thoroughfare, surrounded by several motels of similar age and size, is five minutes from Heavenly Valley Ski Resort and within walking distance of the lake. Built in 1958, this motel has approximately 9,086 square feet and sits on a .63 acre parcel. On November 4th, staff delivered a non-binding letter of intent to the property's owner, WBW Property Holdings Corporation, and received their counterproposal on November 1st. Then on November 19th, a final letter of intent was accepted by both the seller and the county. Staff subsequently presented an agreement of purchase and sale to the seller based on the material terms outlined in the letter of intent. While the seller is in agreement with the material terms, including the purchase price of $1,425,000 and refundable deposits totaling $50,000, some provisions of the purchase and sale agreement still need to be fully negotiated. The key issues include timing for the close of escrow, logistics for inspections and soil testing, and the wording of representations and warranties. A key provision of the agreement is the 180-day investigation period for the county to perform due diligence prior to proceeding with the acquisition. The due diligence includes investigating the property's title, physical condition, and zoning, including verification of SEZ, approving documents provided by the seller, determining the project's overall financial feasibility, receiving approval from TRPA and the City of South Lake Tahoe for the three-to-one bonus and transfer of TAUs to Placer County, reaching agreement with the California Tahoe Conservancy to convey the property for subsequent restoration, approving the property's environmental condition by obtaining a Phase 1 report, and obtaining an appraisal to support the purchase price. At the end of the 180 days, if the county approves all of the conditions, or all of the contingencies, a deposit of $40,000 must be remitted to escrow. Both the initial $10,000 deposit and the additional $40,000 deposit, unless the county is in default of the agreement, are fully refundable should the county decide to cancel the agreement. The deposits will apply to the purchase price upon close of escrow. The letter of intent indicated a 30-day escrow. However, negotiations are, current negotiations are discussing a 45-day escrow period. In addition to the escrow period, several standard terms are included in the agreement, including: timing for the close of escrow, responsibilities for the payment of escrow and title costs, seller's delivery of documents related to the property, county's right of entry and due diligence, and broker commissions and representations. A key condition to close of escrow is the vacating of the motel of all personal property, tenants, and occupants. Given the status of negotiations, staff recommends that your board approve the acquisition and adopt the attached resolution, authorizing the Director of Facility Services, or designee, to complete negotiations, execute the agreement based upon the material terms subject to approval by county council, and execute all documentation and take all necessary actions to process and complete this transaction. The actions requested of your board are exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities, because there is no activity taken by the county that would result in an expansion of the existing use. Additionally, should your board approve the acquisition, this action is exempt pursuant to Section 15325A, which provides for transfers of ownership of land in order to allow for the restoration of natural conditions. The total acquisition cost is estimated at $1,557,850. Approval of the budget revision will provide sufficient funding for this project. And we welcome any questions by your board.
Questions from board members, Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, my question is directed to county council. As you know, I'm a little bit wary of entering into an agreement of which, although the material terms are designated and have been negotiated, the rest of the terms haven't. I just want confirmation from our county council that, number one, they're on top of this, number two, they're gonna be, that you're satisfied with the agreement as it is, and that you're gonna be on top of this from this moment moving forward.
Uh, yes, we've previously been involved in a similar purchase, and I think by now a lot of the issues have been resolved.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other board members, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you both for the presentation. Um, I did have a couple of questions and just clarifications. There's been some concern around this acquisition as it relates to buying something from Eldorado County and bringing the TAUs into Placer County. From my perspective, totally consistent with the regional plan update, which we signed on to and pretty much every other entity in the world agreed to as well, but I want to, um, just verify, we are continuing to look in Placer County to see if there are similar acquisitions that might be available in Placer County?
Absolutely. Our broker that we have working on our behalf, Brad Hester, is looking in Placer County as well as other areas in the Tahoe Basin.
Okay, excellent. I was pretty sure we were, but I just wanted to hear that for sure. And then just also to reiterate, the, the transfer that's being proposed here, again, consistent with the regional plan update, is from SEZ's two high-capability lands, and we're envisioning that this would be in town centers?
Yes, that, that's required, in fact, to get the three-to-one bonus, so it would be for use in Tahoe City or Kings Beach, the boundaries as defined in our upcoming area plan.
Okay. And then the last question that I really had was relating to, just about the last paragraph in the staff report, actually second to last paragraph in the staff report where we took... in the staff report, actually second to last paragraph in the staff report where we talk about detailed business plan recommendations and, you know, future, the future of this. It is our expectation that even though we're going to essentially be the bank of TAUs and we've put the money up front, that there will be some payback that we expect if we then sell those on to developers. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and that is the background information for the costing related to that is included in the pro formas that are in the report that you'll hear later today, the economic incentives report. We plan to do a more detailed analysis on what the payback methodology and fund source would be in the business plan, which is our subsequent document that we're going to be asking for your feedback on today as well. But yes, that will definitely be included.
Okay.
We're not just giving them away, I guess.
Right, thank you. I just wanted to make that very clear because as a Placer County taxpayer myself, I want to make sure that my tax dollars are being spent and then recouped most wisely. So, thank you.
So the, first of all, it sounds like you have a busy six months with all those things listed you need to do in 160 days. But in my mind, the two key items are, number one, the determination of the stream environment zone for the existing property, and then subsequently, number two, the confirmation of the three-to-one transfer. That puts the TAU market price, based on our purchase, at roughly $15,000 per TAU, correct? Somewhere in that neighborhood? And we have indication from the project proponents in the town centers on the north shore that that is an acceptable premium to be paying, if you will, for additional TAUs within the Tahoe area?
I don't know that we have, well, we certainly don't have anything in writing. We've had conversations about the price of TAUs, and we believe that 15 is probably right in the market. We're always going to be trying to get them for a lower price, and if they're not associated with properties, we may be successful in doing that. It's really a range right now. We know that they've sold for as high as $90,000. We think that there is not a market at that rate. We know that the California Tahoe Conservancy has some for sale right now on its website for 20 that have been sitting there for quite some time. So we believe the rate is lower than 20, higher than 5, but in that range somewhere. And it's, you know, just like any commodity, you know, gold, crude oil, the prices fluctuate based on market needs. So we think 15 is in that ballpark, and based on our conversations with folks who are interested in doing development in Tahoe City and Kings Beach, I think there's agreement that it's in the ballpark.
Without adding additional work to your list in the 180 days, is there an intent to begin conversations with some of the project proponents in our town center areas to possibly negotiate letters of intent for acquisition of those and at least get that process started? The shorter time period we hold on to these, the better it is for everybody, obviously.
Right, then that reduces our holding cost.
And so since we know what our cost is with this acquisition, I think it'd be very helpful for us to begin those conversations with folks to start making that determination whether or not the market says we're paying the right price.
Sure, and I think that we have one opportunity right now to start that conversation. We don't have any applications into the county for the projects that are being considered right now.
Understood.
But certainly happy to entertain that conversation.
And I don't know, I mean, kind of to the point of them having the purchase option of the TAUs, I don't know if I were in their shoes, thinking of project applicants up there, if I would begin incurring the costs associated with processing a plan for a project up there absent having the security of knowing that I've locked up my TAUs because it's a very expensive process going through that up in Tahoe. And so I think that might lend itself even more to that conversation about them having secured the option on those TAUs. Okay. All right. Any members of the public in Auburn wish to address the board on this item?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and thank you. I'm Sandy Evans Hall with the Northlake Tahoe Resort Association in Tahoe City, and I'm here to support this effort strongly. I wanted to let you know, first of all, that it is snowing in Tahoe right at this moment. In every ski area, it is snowing heavily, and those guns are going off. The temperatures were 14 degrees as we came over the summit, and it's very important to remember that it snows just about every night in Tahoe at those ski areas, and the skiing has actually been fantastic. So get the word out there. You may not see snow on the ground here, but it is there. This property acquisition is what is needed in order to encourage private investment in Northlake Tahoe, and this action will help to accomplish the goals of the adopted regional plan to return sensitive land to its natural state while also tripling the commodities for use and improving town centers here in Northlake Tahoe. And we believe our board's strategic goals, which we set actually in 2011, said that by 2016, the lodging and/or commercial environment on the Northlake Tahoe shore will be upgraded to include three new or redevelopments consistent with our environmental stewardship goals. So this was really a bold plan that we made in 2011. We hope with Homewood, with Calneva, and with one other property, we're going to actually have that goal met. So this is very, very important to that. We also said in our action plan for this year that we would work with Placer County Business Development and Economic Development staff to proactively encourage an incentive program for redevelopment of identified properties, as well as other programs through Placer County Area Plan Process. So we strongly, strongly believe in this. We think this is a first step for Placer County to actually take a proactive role in working to provide the opportunity to redevelop the built environment in Northlake Tahoe, and we applaud the efforts of your staff, specifically Jennifer Merchant, Paul Griffith, and the Facilities Development Department, and strongly encourage you to approve of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to address the board on this item here in Auburn? Seeing none, Ms. Waller?
Good morning, Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. A couple comments. I'm hoping that the Economic Development Incentives Report will be made available to the public after this meeting for review, and I will ask a couple questions during that period. But we need to do a TAU inventory in Placer as well as around the lake. I sat on a stakeholder team many years ago, and that was one of the things that never got completed. A lot of TAUs are being used as affordable housing units, and maybe some of those could also be used as inventory for future project development. Also, the three-to-one SEZ trade-off won't be available until the area plans are approved, so just be reminded of that. The benefits don't come until the area plan is approved. And for those members of the public that don't understand the different fundings and budgets, and I want to thank Supervisor Montgomery for bringing up we're all taxpayers, where does the budget come from that funds the miscellaneous category, and approximately how much is in that fund?
Okay. Staff have an answer for the question of the funding of this and how much is in it?
It's a capital reserve, and I think the total amount in that, well, I'll let Mary in.
Okay.
Mary Dietrich, Director of Facilities Services. The miscellaneous fund is funded by general fund allocation of dollars. I think right at this point in time, it is the funding available in that is approximately $5 million.
I'm sorry?
Approximately $5 million.
Yeah, I was thinking it was 5.3 for some reason. I don't know why I had that.
Close enough.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Ms. Waller, is there anybody else in Tahoe that wishes to comment at this point? Nope?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comment either here or in Auburn, go ahead and bring this item back to the board for the board's consideration. Supervisor Montgomery?
Just wanted to make one comment in follow-up to Ellie's comments on it. I actually think that we have a pretty good handle right now on the TAU inventory, but I think there is some value in making that clear to the public about, you know, what is out there in Placer County specifically. I know it's a little bit complicated because there's a lot of different jurisdictions and a lot of private individuals that are holding TAUs, but I think that's a really valid question to address so that we, as a board, as well as the public, have a really solid understanding of what we're proposing and the implications.
Good. Okay. Seeing no other comments, we have a motion.
With approval.
Second.
We have a motion, Holmes, second, Montgomery, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran? Why can't? Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler? Aye. Thank you very much. All right, jumping back to our 9:30 timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item regarding the Rioelo Vineyard Specific Plan, amendments to the specific plan, land use and development standards, and development agreements. And is Lisa going to jump in, or is Mr. Johnson going to start us off here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Before you today is a presentation on the proposed amendment to the Rioelo Vineyard Specific Plan. This morning's presentation will focus on the specific plan and the land plan. A subsequent meeting will be scheduled for March 24th, at which time the development agreement and finance plan will be discussed. Lisa Carnahan from the Planning Division will be presenting the item this morning.
Good morning. As you can see here on the map, and hopefully everybody can see in Tahoe, that the Rioelo Vineyard Specific Plan area is in the West Placer area and is bordered by Dry Creek, Watt, PFE down at the southern border, and Willerga on the east side. As approved in 2009 by the board, the specific plan was approved with 933 residential units. The major arterial that connected Watt with Willerga, the Ag-10 lots, which are at the north area, separating residential from open space, the parks, which were more interior to the residential areas, this area of alley-loaded medium-density residential, and a high-density residential affordable housing component. The proposed site plan, as you can see, is there are some changes, but they're relatively minor, and the overall layout remains the same. I'm going to go through the specific changes in the next few slides here. The proposed components of the plan include rural, low-density, and medium-density residential areas, commercial areas both on the east side, the east corner, and the proposed commercial on the west corner, four neighborhood parks, associated open space, multi-use open space trails, and agricultural areas. The updated specific plan includes the creation of two distinct residential areas, Ag areas which are connected to trails, open space, and parks here, and then parks which are exterior to the neighborhoods, which create a better connection with the open space and wetland areas. The key changes to land use include a reevaluation of the rural residential. They decreased some of the medium-density residential numbers and increased some of the low-density residential, but the overall 933 units remain the same. They removed the alley-loaded units. They replaced the high-density residential on the corner, on the southwest corner here, with commercial. And the affordable housing component, as you know, is being met by the developer by paying into the off-site Acres of Hope facility here in Auburn. The Ag-10 lots have been replaced with agriculture and open space areas, and there's been the introduction of residential estate lots right in this area here. Key change in circulation, you can see that they removed this arterial road, and they removed the connection to Watt, and thereby creating two distinct neighborhoods. Changes to the floodplain, there was an overall reduction in the 100-year floodplain by about 6.3 acres. It's kind of hard to tell here on this because it's rather light, but the pink areas in your packet show the areas where it has been, where it was previously approved, and this area here and this area here, which are green, are the proposed areas. But again, it's a reduction in the encroachment. With regards to key changes in trails and open space, the open space and wetland areas have, acreages have been maintained, same number of trails, they've been lengthened a little bit, and there's a better connection between the parks and the open space areas because the parks have been pulled to the perimeter of the residential areas. This kind of gives you a better idea of where the parks are. You can see here, this linear park, there's going to be connections here between the two, it's a pedestrian-bike path connection between the two residential areas. These are all connections to the open space area up here on the north by Dry Creek. Went one too far. Well, now it doesn't want to go back. Well, the last slide is the staff recommendation, and last night, before I do the recommendation, we did receive a correspondence from a representative of the Frisbold property, which is on the southwest portion, and staff has analyzed the contents of the correspondence and feels that it's adequately addressed in the staff report and all of the supporting documentation. As Michael spoke about earlier, the applicant and the county are still working out to find details of the DA and the finance plan, so we are, with that, we're recommending that you open the public hearing, receive testimony on the addendum to the final EIR and the proposed amendments, and then close the public hearing and continue the matter to the March 24th board hearing date. I can answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I would like to see a copy of that letter that came in.
Certainly. I was told that all of the board members received a copy, but we'll certainly get you a copy.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing one, so.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery?
I did have a...
You have copies right here.
Wait.
Okay.
Rioelo Vineyards one?
Are there any more questions that you may have?
Yeah, I had a question. When we refer to open space, is that a specific zoning designation, or are we just using that as a catch-all phrase to indicate undeveloped property?
The open space is a specific area. There's two different categories. There's agricultural open space areas, which are adjacent to the residential areas, and then there's the open space areas, which are adjacent to the Dry Creek.
Right, and what I'm getting at is, open space has a very specific meaning under zoning, meaning it's a specific land use designation that prohibits development, and then there's this sort of more commonly used, which just means it's a big piece of undeveloped property.
Right, it is the former. The open space area next to Dry Creek is going to be preserved in perpetuity.
A specific land use designation.
Correct.
Great, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, Supervisor Duran, your light's still on. Do you have anything else?
I wanted to thank Townhomes and our staff for working very diligently with the local MAC, the West Placer MAC, in evaluating this particular project. I know that Dave Cook, who's sitting here in the audience, has been very careful and has been very open and transparent in talking to anybody he can talk to out there about what different permutations of this particular plan are moving forward, and I know that staff has been there to answer questions on many occasions at the MACs as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing no other board members, lights on, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Any members of the public here in Auburn wish to address the board?
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Bridgette Barnes.
My name is Bridgette Barnes. I'm the attorney for the Frisvold family and for Russ Corolo.
I'm sorry, for whom? Would you speak up a little bit? I didn't hear who you said you're the attorney for.
Oh, I'm sorry. For the Frisvold family and Russ Corolo.
Okay.
My offices are at 3262 Penman Road. There's a copy of a late submitted comment letter being distributed to the board members today. As I mentioned in the letter, I apologize for the late nature of these comments, which are not intended to derail the amendments that are going forward at this time. Mrs. Frisvold is extremely ill, and her brother is here on her behalf. I'm not exactly sure how the notice situation went sideways because we had made special requests for notice going all the way back to 2012 and 2013, and did meet at a very early stage with Mr. Cook. But we haven't gotten any other notices except the standard 10-day notice of this hearing, and that's why I got this in as late as I did. But the issues that I'm just trying to cover and make sure that when the detail for the specific plan is rolled out, are covered, go all the way back to the original concerns and comments of the Frisvold family on the original specific plan, and especially the impacts on the finance plan, which will be coming up in front of you March of this year, that has to be considered. I've tried to identify changes in the original plan to the current, and as you can see, what we're really focused on here have to do with access and roadway concerns as it is modified on PFE. And one of the concerns that we had was that in discussing this with Rebecca Taber yesterday, staff has specific ideas of what it's going to be, which made perfect sense to us and would have mitigated having to present anything, but the plan as written does not address those issues. For example, the plan is mentioning full access, but does not mention that the roadway that's going to go into the property that's homes by town is going to be signalized. If that's signalized, does that mean that we're only going to be able to cross over, pull a left into their project, and then come around, in which case our access has to be addressed and adjusted? Now, these kinds of things normally get handled at the engineering level, but the policies just needed to be corrected in the plan to cover these so that they can be adjusted as engineering plans are presented. Likewise, the designs presented by the applicant are generally understood to be artistic in nature. There hasn't been, you know, any of the surveys done necessarily to determine who's going to be giving easements to whom, but those issues become very material when it gets down to construction, especially when you have a situation like the Frisvold family, which are not developers, have no background in this area, and have to make sure that they preserve the rights for second generation or tiered generation to be able to sell the property at that time. And that is why, for example, I've tried to identify these issues for you and these attachments.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please respond to her. Yeah, it sounds to me like this is a notice, more or less a notice issue, so I would have you speak with my district director, Christina.
Okay.
And then I would encourage you to speak with Dave Cook, who's in the audience, at the end of this meeting. And I'm sure these concerns can be worked out, and we'll fix the notice problem, and then moving forward, we'll have a better understanding of what the issues are for the Frisvolds.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Duran.
Thank you. Anybody else in Auburn wish to address the board? In this public hearing, no. Anybody in Tahoe wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will refer the remaining action to our meeting in March, March 24th, not specifically timed at this point, so we will circulate appropriate timing.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, we'll confer with the applicant, see if one time's better than another.
Okay, all right. Okay, so then no additional action is needed on this item, and so we will move on now. We have time to slip in another department's item. So let's go ahead and jump to Public Works, the Bridge Replacement Project, Alpine Meadows Road over the Truckee River. Go ahead.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name's Matt Randall, and I'm with the Public Works Department. We're excited about the next couple of items here, and I'm going to turn it over to John Mitchell, who's our project manager for the Alpine Meadows Bridge Project.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Matt said I'm John Mitchell, project manager for the Alpine Meadows Road over the Truckee Bridge Replacement Project. Project replaces the existing structurally deficient, functionally obsolete bridge with a new...
Other than structurally deficient and operationally obsolete, is there anything wrong with it?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, good.
So we're going to replace it with a new structure on the same alignment. We're also doing roadway improvements on Alpine Meadows Road and Highway 89 as part of the project, and we're doing a new signalized intersection at Highway 89 and Alpine Meadows Road. The department has two items related to the bridge for your consideration today. The first relates to the construction contract for the new bridge, and the second relates to the construction management contract for the construction. First item, Department Item 6A, is to award the construction contract and specifically adopt a resolution awarding contract number 1186 for the construction of the Bridge Replacement Project, Alpine Meadows Road over the Truckee River to MCM Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $5,961,630 with county council and risk management review and approval. There's no net cost to the county for this item. Also authorize the chair of the board to execute contract number 1186, and authorize the director of public works to execute contract change orders up to an additional 10% of the contract amount. Additional background information on the bid process is as follows. February 3rd, Placer County opened all bids for the construction of Alpine Meadows Road Bridge Replacement Project. Six bids were received, and MCM Construction was the apparent low bidder. After bid review, the department issued a notice of intent to award the contract on February 10th, 2015. After that notice of intent to award was issued, a protest was received from Gordon Mball, the second lowest bidder, regarding a prequalification supplemental requirement. Administrative services and county council found the protest to be without merit and denied it in a letter to Gordon Mball on February 19th, 2015. I respectfully request approval of the Department Item 6A, and I'm happy to address any questions or concerns.
Okay, before we take questions and comment on just this one, why don't you go ahead and give us the staff presentation on 6B as well? Then we'll take comments, questions on both items, and we'll take action separately, but we'll discuss them as one related project. So if you go ahead and give staff a word on B.
Okay, so Item 6B is to award the construction management contract and specifically adopt a resolution authorizing the chair of the Board of Supervisors to sign and execute contract number 00910 with the Hana Group in an amount not to exceed $1,065,000 for the construction inspection, materials testing, and related services with county council and risk management approval for the Alpine Meadows Bridge Replacement Construction Project. And authorize the director of public works to execute subsequent contract amendments up to 10% of the contract amount as needed. Again, there's no net cost to the county for this item. A little background on the RFP selection process is five firms submitted proposals in response to the open request for proposals solicited by Procurement Services. After evaluating the proposals and interviewing the top three consultants by team of county staff from Procurement Services, DPW, and El Dorado County, the Hana Group of Sacramento was the highest-ranked firm based on the requirements of the RFP. I respectfully request approval of Department Item 6B, and I'm happy to address any questions on that item as well.
Okay. On the two items before us, board members have any questions or comments? Supervisor Montgomery?
Matt and John, thank you both for the presentation. Appreciate it. And this is something that's a long time coming, and, you know, infrastructure, I know, is something that our board is very concerned about, making sure we get out in front of our functionally obsolete and whatever your other term was, infrastructure. You know, we want to make sure that we protect the folks, both who live here in our county and in the case of Alpine Meadows, the many people who visit our county. The one question I do have on this, most of it is very clear, is there is a mention that the project also includes approximately 1,500 feet of widened roadway approach on Alpine Meadows Road. Roughly speaking, is that from about where the Water District entry is and the fire station down?
It's just past the, towards Alpine Meadows from the Water District entrance, and then down to the bridge.
Okay. And will that have any impact on the businesses right at the Truckee River there?
During construction, there is impact on the businesses. We have a temporary bridge that's going through their parking lot. We've mitigated that with a parking lot behind their facility, which will actually be permanent. And other than that, there's, you know, just general construction.
So, but would the widening of the road occur onto their property, or is it all within county easement?
It's within our right.
Right of way. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Those were my only questions and clarifications.
I believe it was structurally deficient and operationally obsolete.
[laughing]
The descriptors of this particular bridge. Seeing no other lights from board members, are there any members of the public here in Auburn wish to address the board on this item? None. Anybody in Tahoe wish to address the board on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
With approval of Items 6A and B inclusive? Sorry.
Okay, motion, Montgomery, second Wygant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is the Criminal Justice Master Plan. I have a whole host of folks that I see being credited with making presentations today, beginning with Becky Rigan and Marshall Hopper, and then Judge Paneshi as well.
Let's see the judge, but he's not budging to try to see.
I don't see the judge.
We've got Jake Chatters, I think, stepping in.
Oh, there he is. How you doing, Judge? Okay. Take one and pass him on, okay.
Thanks for all your help.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board, Becky Rigan from the County Executive Office, with the next item on your agenda, which is the final recommendations from the Criminal Justice Master Plan. Joining me in today's presentation are, to my left, Jake Chatters, Court Executive Officer for the Placer County Superior Court, Chief Probation Officer, Marshall Hopper, and to his left, Mark Nigel, the Director of Adult Reentry Services with the Sacramento County Office of Education, which we will from here on refer to as SCOE. Several members of the Criminal Justice Policy Committee are also here in attendance, including Presiding Judge Alan Paneshi, Jail Commander Captain Don Hutchinson, representatives from the District Attorney's Office and Public Defense Contract Offices, and Health and Human Services. We are all very pleased to be here this morning and to be presenting these items for your board's consideration. There are three actions being requested of your board today. First, to receive an update on the master plan final recommendations, which are being provided on behalf of the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. Second, to receive a presentation by SCOE on proposed reentry counseling and educational services to be provided at the county's new reentry center, based at the Santucci Justice Complex. And finally, to approve a 16-month contract for reentry services with SCOE in the amount of approximately $1.3 million, and to authorize two two-year renewals, and for the purchasing manager to sign any related agreements. We are now three and a half years into implementing AB 109, or Public Safety Realignment, landmark legislation transferring responsibility for tens of thousands of offenders from the state, prison, and parole systems to county jail and probation departments. When we started this project two years ago, we had the first year of implementing realignment successfully under our belts. Construction of Phase One of the new South Placer Adult Correctional Facility was nearing completion, and we were in the early stages of emerging from several years of a severe economic decline. Placer County justice officials thought it prudent to embark on a justice system master plan to ensure that we had the corrections capacity and continuum of services necessary to protect the public and to ensure our continued success with this new legislation. The planning process consisted of comprehensive, system-wide data collection and analysis, a full-day symposium attended by over 60 Placer County justice officials and their key staff to review the findings, and many hours of discussions by three separate work groups facilitated and co-chaired by six Superior Court judges. We have 21 recommendations to report to your board today. They are summarized in a document submitted by the co-chairs of the Criminal Justice Policy Committee, which is included in attachment one in your board packets, and is also posted on the county's website. These recommendations have been approved and reviewed by the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. They have also been discussed with members of the Community Corrections Partnership and with members of the community who attended these CCP meetings. The proposed contract for reentry services with Sacramento County Office of Education is a result of early action taken by your board in response to the consultant's recommendation to add this component to Placer County's justice system continuum. The Criminal Justice Committee believes that collectively, these recommendations provide a framework for us to work from over the next several years, and that they will inform our decision-making to assist in making the best investments possible of our available resources across our respective agencies. By bringing resources to the table, such as increased access to educational and employment services, and proven programming both in and out of custody, we are improving the response to people with criminal histories, and in doing so, we promote safer communities, stronger families, and smarter fiscal policies. So unless you have any questions for me at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Jake Chatters to walk through the final recommendations.
Any questions, Becky? Nope? Okay, go ahead, Jake.
Thank you, Supervisor Euler, and members of the board. I'm very happy to walk you through what is a very small attachment today, so if you have it electronically, you are benefited by the ability to Zoom, and if you don't, I will try and read as much of it as I can. Pointing to the attachment that Becky mentioned, it's an attachment A. It's labeled one of four on the bottom right. It looks like an Excel spreadsheet. And before I walk through it, I do want to thank the board for the opportunity to present the information today. It is the culmination of many hours, I'm sure we did not tabulate it, of work from multiple different criminal justice agencies in Placer County. With that, I would like to thank the leadership of Supervisor Duran and Judge Paneshi for chairing the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. It is difficult to have that many entities together who have competing, competing isn't a good term, but basically competing interests in their constituencies, and keeping collaboration moving ahead to the betterment of all of us in the community. We had members of the CJPC individually and their staff participate in the three work groups outlined by Becky a moment ago. Those work groups met throughout the fall and were chaired by six of our judges, two on each of those committees. There were many hours of discussion about what were the key priorities for us as criminal justice entities to move forward, and discussion on how specifically to word those to ensure that we are meeting all of the needs of both prosecution, defense, victims, and the community as a whole. I want to thank Chief Hopper and the members of the CCP. The Community Corrections Partnership was a very good discussion at those meetings, both as the process moved forward and then as we presented these recommendations. Lots of questions for us to consider as we move forward as a group, including those from the public, which I would like to thank those that participated. They asked very direct questions for us to answer that made sure that we were really thinking through the recommendations before we brought them to the committee itself and then before you today. These 20 recommendations do represent, as Becky said, a roadmap for us to consider going forward. You will notice that they are not prioritized, so it is not that one is priority one and there's a priority 21. And that's because the groups as a whole felt all 21 of them we need to continue to put focus on. However, knowing that we all have limited resources, we can't just work on 21 separate projects at one time, and so there are some timeframes included in the attachment for you to consider or to be aware of on things that we know we can start today and are working on already versus things that maybe we need to wait a few months before we begin. Doesn't mean they aren't a high priority, but we do need to at least allow our staff as we all collectively deal with fewer people than we had, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, as we move forward. The governance structures of criminal justice are, of course, complicated. There are many items that are under your authority and your governance that you would need to approve either funding or policy direction for, while others may need to go to the city councils, maybe within the purview of the court for the judges to make a determination, or others, these recommendations are within the authority of the individual agency heads. And so for that reason, there aren't specific recommendations for you today. Instead, I'm going to highlight a couple of items that are currently underway, some of which may come back to your board in the future for either policy or funding direction, but just so you're aware, some of these you may never see directly again because they aren't something that would necessarily need a board approval. Likewise, there are 21 items here that we all think are very important as a collective group, but things change. I think that none of us would say that all 21 will ultimately end up being implemented because laws change, priorities change for all of us as entities. Even during this process, Proposition 47 passed. Even during this process, Proposition 47 passed, and the change of many cases from felonies to misdemeanors impacts what we need to do as entities overall, whether it's the court and how we balance our calendars, the jail and who is currently sitting in the jail, or defense counsel and how they allocate their resources to deal with felonies versus misdemeanors. So while we will move forward on all these today, we would anticipate that come six, seven, eight years from now, there may be one or two that fell off as no longer being a priority for us as a community. Okay. With that said, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to walk through each of the 21 recommendations. We do want to make sure you leave time for Chief Hopper and SCOE to give their presentation. So if you're looking at the spreadsheet itself, I'm going to touch on a few highlights just so you're aware of what they are, what may be coming to your board in the near term. So on the first one of those pages labeled one of four, Recommendation 1.1, which is to complete construction of a courtroom for arraignments, in-custody hearings, and other criminal matters inside the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility to enable the court and other justice partners to improve security, reduce travel and transportation time, and consolidate functions. I am pleased to share with you that on the state judicial branch side, there has been approval for that project to move forward. $2 million has been allocated by the state to move that project ahead. We do anticipate coming back before your board, whether it's me or the County Exec's Office, not sure of the exact entity, with both information related to the transfer of a facility and also potential county participation in the completion of that project. So we anticipate that coming forward sometime in the relatively near future. Item 1.3, expediting efforts to establish a Placer County crime laboratory, and in the interim, allocate resources needed to reduce delays in obtaining laboratory test results. Also, there has been work on that, including the District Attorney's Office, County Procurement, and the County Executive's Office to start discussions related to what may be an appropriate way to handle that situation, which may result in an item coming back before your board at some point in the future. Onto the next page, again highlighting just a few of these. Item 2.1, which is expanding operational capacity of the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility to enable utilization of additional bed space and allow for bookings of that location while maintaining booking in Auburn. Obviously, there's a great deal of analysis that goes into exactly how that would need to transpire, what those resource requirements are, and I am aware that there are discussions ongoing with Sheriff's Department and County Exec's Office that may come back to your board as part of the budget process or as otherwise appropriate. 3.2 is a little different for all of us. This one is to identify additional and alternate transportation options for defendants to appear at court hearings. This one really involves our outreach to the community and identifying community resources that can support that process. We had a very, I think, good discussion and some great ideas that came out of CCP meeting related to how we could still remain involved in that as government entities, and I think there'll be some movement on that and discussion in the near term. Going on to the next page, items 5.1 and 5.3 relate to collaborative courts. I'm going to summarize here in the establishment of a subcommittee to the Criminal Justice Policy Committee and an adoption of some best practice standards and components of collaborative courts. Would anticipate that being a discussion at the next Criminal Justice Policy Committee meeting and that moving forward very rapidly. Item 6.1, one of the challenges always in order to provide adequate services is funding, and so this one relates to adequate funding for probation department and HHS staff to support collaborative courts and supervise probationers and collaborative court programs. And based on my understanding, that may be something you'll also see in the near future through the budget process coming back to your board. On to the next page, which is 4 of 4. 7.1, you'll obviously hear more about here today in a moment as soon as I stop my portion here, which is support the opening of fully functioning South Placer Adult Correctional Facility to enable the optimal use of the probation prep center, which again, Chief Hopper will speak about here in a moment. And then finally, just to point out, item 9.1 on the very bottom of the page is to develop a mechanism for data collection and analysis regarding offender risk analysis, program participation, program effectiveness, and recidivism for use by the court and the county in selecting and supervising programs. So obviously, your board would be interested in how are we doing, which programs are effective, and certainly that is a priority for us to develop those mechanisms. So again, those are just highlights, nine of the, I believe, of nine of the 21. In the interest of time, if there's any questions for me before, I believe it goes to Chief Hopper.
Any questions at this point? Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you just touched on some of them. We're going to be here all day. I did have a couple of questions on, a few that you touched on. I'm delighted to hear that the $2 million on 1.1 has already been allocated by the state because obviously, one of the things that we are charged with as a board is allocating and spending our county tax dollars. And I'm looking at a lot of things here that are $2 million plus or undetermined, and that's a little bit disconcerting to me to sort of have this very broad future with not a lot of parameters around it. So obviously, that's going to be a discussion for our board as part of the budget. I would encourage all of us to focus on some of these things that you didn't touch on that were less expensive and maybe a little bit easier to implement because they don't require infrastructure. Particularly, I think, 9.1, the data collection piece is really going to be critically important for all of us. And I think that while we're all a little bit siloed in terms of our data and how we collect it, I think robust sharing from, you know, the very beginning of the criminal justice process, all the way through to the end, you know, to Marshall and probation and follow-up is going to be really critically important. Here at the county, I think it's a little bit easier for all of us through all our departments to collate that information, bring it together. But, and I know that the courts have some sensitivity about sharing some of the information just because of personal privacy issues, but I think that's going to be absolutely critically important for us, not just to measure what are we doing and how are we doing it and how much are we spending, but really what are the outcomes that we're getting? And are we doing better than the state was doing? Are we doing better than other counties? Are we doing better than we were doing? And to me, 9.1 is probably the most critical piece of this whole conversation because if we don't have metrics to measure ourselves against, this whole thing is just sort of operating in a vacuum from my perspective. So I'm really pleased to see that recommendation coming forward and just encourage everybody throughout the whole continuum to make sure that we share that data robustly and fully. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments for board members before I turn it over to Mr. Hopper, whose son Tyler had an outstanding lacrosse game and nap on Saturday, I might add?
Thank you. On that note, I'm Marshall Hopper, your Chief Probation Officer. Good morning Chairman Euler, members of the board. Mr. Bosch, pleasure to be here today as we present and request your board's approval for our new plaster reentry program. You know, over the last several years, legislative changes has shifted demands on our local system. But our local system continues to adapt to ensure that offenders are supervised in our community and that we provide appropriate services to those being released. Over the last several months, with your board's approval, the department, in conjunction with procurement services, developed a request for proposal to solicit competitive bids for the plaster reentry program. The evaluation panel consisted of a local police chief, staff members from the Sheriff's Office, probation, health and human services, the court, and the CEO's office. They all evaluated the proposals and interviewed the two top-ranking firms. The criminal justice panel unanimously determined that the Sacramento County Office of Education best met the needs of our county. Sacramento County Office of Education currently runs two adult day reporting centers in Yolo County and also participates in the Sacramento Community-Based Coalition serving parolees. Their reentry programming includes an array of services designed to assist offenders as they reenter the community. Over the last 24 years working in the probation field, I personally supervised thousands of low-to-high-risk adult and juvenile offenders. And regardless of their age, I have never had a person tell me that their childhood goals and ambitions in life were to become a criminal, spending a lifetime embedded in our justice system. In fact, almost all of those conversations revolved around an event or a poor decision that eventually led them through the door of our justice system. This program today will reopen that door for those people who want to change their lives, while providing the opportunity for them to revisit their goals and ambitions, while enhancing community supervision, offender accountability, and promoting safer communities. Throughout the criminal justice presentation today and the documents provided by the work groups, it is clear that both in and out-of-custody services are crucial to our justice system here in Placer County. Therefore, this morning, we have invited the Sacramento County Office of Education to share their services, their vision for Placer County's reentry program. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mark Nigel from the Sacramento County Office of Education, who will go over the programs and details, and we will be available for any questions at the conclusion of his presentation. Thank you.
Mark, before you jump in, let's see if there are any board members having questions. Marshall? Okay, I don't see any. Go ahead, Mark.
Chairman Euler, members of the board, thank you for having me here today to listen to our proposal here for Placer County. My name is Mark Nigel. I run the adult reentry services for SCOE. And, you know, it talks about here on our opening slide where successful transition begins, and that's what we truly believe and that we've seen in our experience working with that. This morning, I'm going to briefly tell you about our experience with the reentry programs that we run and what we're proposing here to do in Placer County. The first thing, back in 2007, as Chief Hopper mentioned, we opened the Sacramento Community Based Coalition. This was a partnership with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Services at CDCR, where we serve parolee clients in all of reentry. And we opened our program in 2007, and it looks greatly different now in 2015 based on what clients need. Our program has evolved over and over, every year, every month, based on the needs of our clients and the changing times from maybe 109 to Prop 47 to what's ahead of us. And the whole time, we're just listening to our clients and giving them what they need so they can have a successful transition and move forward with their lives. The work that we did in Sacramento made us interested in continuing to do this work, and an RFP came up in Yolo County, and in 2013, we opened our Woodland Day Reporting Center. Try this thing too. Well, we served over 500 clients in both in and out of custody. It's a very similar program to what the proposal was here in Placer County. So we start in the county jail, we follow the clients out with seamless transition when they get released, and we continue to work with them until they complete and become alumni in our program. By partnering in Yolo County and also with CDCR, we opened up the West Sacramento Day Reporting Center in June of 2014, where we're serving both parolee and probation clients. And to date, we've served over 100 clients to date, and the programs are seamlessly run and from the in-custody transition to out-of-custody, it's been very successful. Another part that we participate in is the community resources and job fairs with parolees in Sacramento and probationers. And also in Sacramento County, we worked, in 2013, we opened a pre-apprenticeship construction training program with one of our partners, NCCT, which we'll talk about a little bit later. And we also provide GED and education services for the probation clients in Sacramento County that are working on reentry as well. And then, a little bit behind me, the community resources and job fairs that we also participate In Placer County, what we're proposing to do is to start with our in-custody program in South Placer and in the Auburn, in the Auburn County jails that you guys run here. And so what we want to do is start in the minimum security, and then we're going to go into the South Placer jail and then evolve it into Auburn. And then we will also open the prep center, and I think the prep center is scheduled to be open sometime this summer, but we'll still provide out-of-custody programming for clients that get out right now, and we're working with probation to find a location to do that. One thing that's been very important from the chief from the very start was how we're going to serve clients in the Tahoe area, so we talked about utilizing technology and other resources to provide reentry services for the clients up in Tahoe as well. A little bit about our model, the way that it'll work is we'll receive a referral from our partners, whether it's probation or the sheriff and custody staff. At that time, we will do an intake and an assessment. We will be using the same assessments, the case assessments that probation has adopted. At that point, based on that assessment, we will start with individual and/or group instruction for what that client needs. We'll develop a reentry plan. When they do get released from custody, we will continue to work with them at the prep center. What's nice, it'll be some of the same staff that we have working in custody, and the same case manager will follow this client and be working with them on the outside as well. So that way, it ensures they already have worked with the case, they already know this client and what they need, they've already connected them to resources, and as opposed to handing them off to somebody else, they will be working with them all the way through the transition to the fully implementation of the reentry plan. One thing that is really important, as we staff our program up, we do currently have employees right now who reside in Placer County who are working in our other programs, who have expressed interest that if we open up the program here in Placer County, that they would be very interested in coming and working in the county that they work, as well as hiring other people from Placer County and other providers as well. It's something that we're committed to doing. So a little bit about our program and the menu of services, this is not what our program looked like in 2007. It would be, you know, a few items, a couple cognitive behavior classes, maybe an AOD program, and, you know, some way to get people jobs. And our program has completely evolved through time. And we kind of broke this down into life skills, employment, substance abuse programming, education, other programs, and everything is based on client-centered. You know, the evidence-based programming, it's individualized, it's divided by risk level, gender-specific, and it's to meet the immediate needs. And just to highlight a few of the different programs that we have here, you know, one of the first core programs that we have, somebody will go through our program and they'll take about six weeks where they show up every single day for three hours a day. And in that, they're getting a CBT program, which will probably do courage to change. Unless the assessment says that they need more than that, then maybe we would do a program like moral recognition therapy, MRT. We have an employment component, which is a six-week work net program, and we have some paths to get them into pre-apprenticeship programming. Education, we would partner with Placer Adult Education and continue to work that they have in custody and out of custody as well, to increase literacy levels, GED, and HICE Set, which is another equivalency exam. A lot of our clients need substance abuse programming, so what we would work with would be, you know, our program is all education, and if a client needs more than what we're offering with substance abuse, then we refer to treatment and work with the Department of Health and Human Services. Other programs that we also offer are the 52-week batter's DUI classes. And this has been, the DUI class really came from, was a huge impediment to our clients moving forward with their lives. They got a DUI five or six years before they went in. And these programs are offered to our clients when they're fully engaged in our program, when they are attending, when they are testing clean, when they're showing that they have the responsibility and they're taking our program seriously, then we offer programs like DUI classes so that way they can move beyond this and go ahead and get employed. And it's been a huge impediment to their employment, and since we, you know, infused this class, it's been a very successful class and keeps clients engaged in our program. Our program structure, kind of the method to our madness, I don't know if that's working anymore.
Uh-oh.
All right, well, you have, I passed out a packet, so.
Yeah. We see it on our screen.
Oh, it's working on your screen? Okay. So our program structure, the first thing is individualized case service planning. And so it's based on the assessments, supervision conditions, and what the client is interested in. We really want to individualize the program for the clients and meet the needs of why they're here and what they need for successful reentry. We broke our program down into three different phases. We have our first phase, which is four weeks, which includes an intake, program orientation, we do risk and needs, we will do the case assessment there, and we will really develop an individualized program of what this client needs based on their conditions, whether they need a 52-week batter's class, they need a parenting class to get their children back with CPS, whatever it is that they need, we will develop that first program. And phase one is about four weeks. Phase two is about two to four months. This is really the core of their program, where they're getting involved in their individual classes, they are working towards their GED, they're coming up with their job readiness plan, their aftercare plan, they're going through their substance abuse during the whole, the substance abuse programming. During the whole time, we usually randomly drug test in our program about two times a month. And then we report all of the findings, and if there's any negative drug tests or positive drug tests, we report all of that to their supervising agent. And phase three is really, really the kind of the core of our program, where our clients are getting really self-sufficient. At this time, they are enrolled in a vocational program, they're enrolled in community college, they are employed. At this point, we're really trying to have people give back to their community. So this is where we really make sure that they're doing their community service program, which usually we have a requirement of about 20 hours. We do restorative justice practices and victim awareness to how their actions affected other people in the community and the community at large, how we can rectify that and move forward. And these are all very important phases that we've kind of developed through time that when followed, we have some very predictable outcomes that our clients have been very successful and with successful transition back to, or just to reenter. All right. That's still not working. Are you guys at the Northern California Construction Training Slide? Is that where we're at there?
Right now, we're not seeing.
You're not seeing it.
There we are. Now we're at the individual case.
They're working to.
Yeah, I saw, I saw Greg come in.
One more? You're there?
Yeah, we can see it.
All right. One of our partners that we work that's been very successful with us is partnering with Northern California Construction and Training Program. It's a pre-apprenticeship program that helps people get certified in the construction industry. There's 19 different industry sectors that they are able to get people certified in, and they've been very successful placing people in pre-apprenticeships and then apprenticeship programs, which has led to employment. This is a very felon-friendly industry, and a lot of our clients express interest and an aptitude for being very good with their hands building and construction, and this is something that's been a vital part of our program. The apprenticeship's about six to eight months, so if they're in our program for two to three months, and then they transition. two to three months, and then they transition to Northern California Construction Training, they're involved in moving forward with their life and very positive influences for about eight to 10, 12 months, and then they replace that activity with a job and full-time employment at a sustainable wage. And this has been very successful for all of our clients, and we would like to bring this program to Placer County as well. I'm not sure what you guys are seeing. The last part here is with the family reunification and community events. This is another, you know, we try to celebrate everything as much as we can. A lot of our clients haven't had a lot of success in their life, and so finishing anything from Phase 1, having clean and sober, you know, parties first for the clients when they test clean, all of these things are extremely important, along with the community resource fairs, to make sure that everybody has been screened for the Affordable Care Act and has medical benefits, everything that we do, and celebrating sobriety, and then family reunification, and then, of course, our big events. And I'd kind of like to reference you now to the handout that I have here. And on the right side, I have a couple of different handouts for you. The first one is just information on our program in Yolo, which I thought would be very similar to what we're doing here. It's just a handout which briefly explains kind of our program in detail and how to get into it. I've also included one of our fall celebration highlights of our alumni clients of who, you know, this was one of our celebrations of everybody who completed our program. We usually have one or two events, usually a fall celebration and a spring celebration. On the back of it, I'd like you to take a look at all of the organizations that are involved. This is definitely a community program. This isn't a one standalone, and it can't be siloed. The more people that are involved, you never know which direction and who's going to make a difference in a client's life and what they need to do to move forward with it. And all the different agencies that have been involved in the Yolo program are listed on the back of this document. And then the last thing that I would like to bring to your attention would be our annual report that we did for, you know, we, you know, to talk about, you know, how our program did the first year. And so this was our annual report, our year interview for 2013 and 2014 for our first year in Yolo County. And I'd like to just go through this real quick with you and reference a couple of items. On page 3 is kind of our summary of findings, and you'll find there were seven objectives that were laid out for us. And what happened was we created a DRC Steering Committee, and on this Steering Committee were made of key stakeholders in the community, and these were the different outcomes that they wanted us to measure, that they wanted to say, "How do you know your program is successful?" You know, and so these were the first year of objectives that we came out with. Our second year has about 10. We added two or three based on the information from the Board of Supervisors, the information that the CCP was interested in us collecting, as well as our partners with the sheriff and probation and parole. And so as you can see, there are seven different objectives and kind of what our goals were and what our outcomes were at that point. To your right on the page defines kind of our in custody programming. And one thing that was really nice was working with the sheriff's staff. We took about 10 months, but we were able to have a pod that was just dedicated to programming, which was really beneficial for doing a very similar program for the out of custody and in custody program. And so this is kind of our in custody graduation picture that you see right there. And as you can kind of go through this, I'd like to reference you kind of to the last page. And on the last page, you would see kind of our Yolo County Day Reporting Center Steering Committee and who is made up of that. And working with Chief Hopper, he said that we would go ahead and get some key stakeholders involved in this committee to come up with outcomes of how we would measure the success of the program, what data we needed to collect. And this is the list of those people that are on the Steering Committee in Yolo County. And then on the back of it is, once again, all of our partners. So that is the real quick version of what we're proposing to do here in Placer County, and we're very excited to be here.
Thank you. Any questions, Mark, at this point, by board member supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I just want to take a few moments to say thank you for everybody in all our departments, HHS, Sheriff's Office, probation, the Defense Bar, courts, and our staff here for doing the work and providing us an opportunity to get to know one another a little bit more in detail. I know that, and we were kind of primed for this process, having gone through it and creating the master plan, the CCP, the Community Corrections Partnership as a result of AB 109. And, you know, I have the distinct appreciation for being here and being a supervisor in Placer County because, as opposed to other places, our units, although we may not agree on everything, and we have some intricacies that make us more different than one another, our central goal is public safety. And aside from education, that's one of my biggest passions is public safety and law enforcement. So, you know, when we approach this kind of a project, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of talent, it takes a lot of effort, and that's just on the side of the departments. And then we have to interface with the public, who really doesn't know the challenges that each different part, piece of the puzzle, each different department has in arriving at a recommendation. So for example, you know, if you want to reduce court time, you can't just pull out and speed something else up with the courts because it affects the system as a whole. And you'll see some themes in this report, and then the next item that we're going to be taking up, that you treat the system, you treat the person, you don't treat, you know, you don't look at one thing because they're all interrelated. So, you know, at the end of the day, we've done some work here that I think gets us to a point where we can make some really substantive choices moving forward. And I think it's open-ended to address Supervisor Montgomery's concern about, you know, kind of being open, that it's flexible enough as a law changes, as funding comes up, as things change, that we can adapt quicker than a lot of other places. So I want to commend everybody for their participation in this, especially our Judge Alan Paneshi, who signed this report along with myself. We own this, and it's our responsibility to move this forward. And I know Alan has the patience of Job in moving the process forward, and I want to thank him for co-chairing the Criminal Justice Policy Committee for Placer County that took this responsibility on, and thank the bench for its leadership in putting together these recommendations. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow, we've come a long way in the last two or three years, and I know it's a lot of hard work from all those partners that have participated in this, and I want to thank the Placer people of faith for keeping our feet to the fire so we get through with this. It's amazing, I'm appreciative of the long-term program that these people that are in reentry and recovery, it's just not a 21-day or 30-day program, it's something long-term that they can actually rebuild their lives. This is an excellent way to move forward. I particularly want to thank Supervisor Duran for his leadership with his background in the criminal justice system, and I mean that in a positive way. He was the right person to represent the Board of Supervisors on this process. So it looks good, and I'm really appreciative of all the hard work, and I'm excited about the way we're moving forward with this. So thank you very much.
Okay, other board members, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I really just want to echo the comments of my fellow supervisors on this, and thank everyone who was involved in this process, especially and including the public, who really brought this to our attention a number of years ago, that we had some opportunities to really take a look at how we did things and frankly, do them better. And it's always really exciting for us, I think, as a board, to be able to look at sort of big policy pictures, but not just look at them in a vacuum and say, "Yes, it's a big policy picture," but actually have very specific recommendations that we can take forward that will make really positive changes to people's lives, including the lives of our own staff. I was coming in last night from an evening meeting and noticed that Becky was leaving at about 7:15 last night, so I'm sure that she will be very pleased for us to take this responsibility on and really kind of help take it off the shoulders of staff who have done so much. But this conversation that we're having about the Criminal Justice Master Plan has a lot of connection to our next 10:30 agenda item. Hopefully, we can disconnect that connection as part of these policy discussions. But I really just did want to take the opportunity to thank the courts, to thank the sheriff's department, to thank our own county staff, district attorney, probation. You guys have put so much time, so much energy, so much effort into this, and that often goes unrecognized, and I want to make sure that you really are all recognized because people think that this is a nine-to-five job. Becky was here at 7:15 last night, and I know it was in relation to this item. So thank you all from the bottom of my heart, and let's work towards those better outcomes. And I think working with SCOE is probably going to be a really good approach to getting those better outcomes.
Okay, senior other board comments? Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Please.
I just had a quick question. Victoria Connolly, I live in the city of Auburn. Either I missed it, or I didn't hear it addressed, or it wasn't addressed. How are the outlying areas, even including like Auburn, going to be served in this kind of model? I was very curious. All I heard was Roseville being central to the service system.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll ask Mr. Hopper if you go ahead and address.
Yes, the proposal from SCOE also includes transportation, bus passes, and also vehicle transportation as well. So at this point, starting in Roseville, we'll be able to bring offenders down to the programs, and maybe sometime down the road, we can evaluate a program in Auburn as well.
Thank you.
And there was also, just to be clear, there was also a discussion about how Tahoe, the far eastern end, was going to be brought into this as well through Skype and maybe other opportunities like the empty chair on this screen.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Offer from Placer People of Faith Together. I have two notebooks full of notes that I've taken from the interviews we've conducted over the last four years in our study of the criminal justice system of Placer County. And about halfway through, about the end of 2012, we learned that there were a lot of questions we couldn't get answers to because we didn't have the data. And not only that, the county didn't have the data. Now, the sheriff's department has a very good data system, and there's a lot that they've shared with us, it's been very helpful to us. But there are a lot of questions that need to be answered in this whole area of criminal justice. We did a wonderful project in the one-year criminal justice study, but that data is two years old, and we need to have a continual collection of data so that we continue to understand where we are in our criminal justice efforts. Now, we've done an awful lot through the last several years. First time we interviewed Mr. Duran, he said that we in Placer County are very proud that we use more stick than carrot in dealing with criminal justice problems. And we interviewed the district attorney, and he used those same words. Over the years, we've gotten to know these people and worked with them, and we've come to an understanding, and I think that all of us have changed in our attitude toward criminal justice from being a system of retribution to being a system that wants to solve the problem. And I think now, we might be able to say that we here in Placer County are proud that we do things right. So we would like to see a system of data collection established. And also, the question here of transportation has been brought up, and we'd like to be included in that conversation, because we come across a lot of probationers and offenders who don't show up on time at the Justice Center because they can't get there, so we need to solve that problem. But we'd like to thank all of you in the Criminal Justice Committee and all of you in the Board of Supervisors for all that we've done in the last several years to make a really good change in our criminal justice system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in Auburn wish to address the board on this item? Okay, anybody in Tahoe wish to address the board on this item? All right. Would you do me a favor, Mark? Would you scroll back in your slides, assuming we get the slides back up on the screen? There we go. Thank you. It's number five. Thank you. There you go. Okay. So it's been referenced a couple of times already about our next item. And I'm struck by how many of these particular services, when we received the report last week on some of the needs identified with our homeless community here in Placer County, how many of the needs identified in that report are covered by these kinds of services? I would, if you're able, I would encourage you to stick around for the next item as we have this conversation, and let's see if there isn't an opportunity at some point in the future to begin having a conversation about how we might be able to extend these kinds of services to the folks that have needs beyond being introduced through the probation system, and see if we might, there might be opportunities for partnerships there as well. Clearly, the report last week, though, identified the issue of transportation as a significant hurdle, and that the community that we're dealing with in the Auburn area simply isn't going to voluntarily necessarily get themselves down to Roseville. And so I think to Supervisor Montgomery's point, that would necessitate the offering of some of these services up here in the Auburn area. But if you're willing to stick around and you think that there might be application that we should explore in the future, I know I'd be open to hearing from you in the future about how, what you're currently offering might be extended to meet the homeless population's needs here in Placer County as well. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah. Excuse my ignorance, I just need a little clarification about 52-week batters. Can you expand? I think I know what it means, but just so I.
The 52-week batters program is a mandated program pursuant to the Penal Code. It's a Class 4 domestic violence offenders to receive services and education. It's a mandated program, and it's basically, they meet once a week for the entire year.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, just to kind of tee off on what Kirk is saying, having worked for several charter schools in the area that address adult education, it's interesting that you brought that up because many of the grants that are available to address recidivism, the monies are also available for folks that are homeless or need to get up to speed. So there's a lot of crossover that can happen there.
Good. That's great, thank you. Okay, we have received our update, we have received our presentation. The only action here is to approve an award of the competitive request for proposals, which would in fact enlist the services with SCOE for the 16 months beginning March 1st and going through June 30th. Do we have a motion?
No scribble of the item.
Okay, then we'll take Holmes as the motion, and Montgomery's the second. How's that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead on to our 10:30 timed item. This is in regard to a temporary emergency homeless shelter, Right Hand Auburn, Inc., and a site access agreement with the county.
If I could ask folks to take their conversations outside as we can go ahead and proceed with our board meeting, I would appreciate it if you have any. Oh, we've lost our quorum. That's not good. All right, we'll wait for a supervisor to return. And.
Let me go look for him.
Thereby further dividing the form. The old adage, if you're lost, just stay put. Let somebody find you. Okay, we can go ahead and, I'm sorry. People in the back can't hear us?
Nope.
Just me?
Come on, for justice. It's true. Whatever's happening with the sound.
Okay.
Not just you, also Supervisor Holmes, we're not.
Okay. So perhaps our gentleman running our microphone, there we go, now he just cranked it up. There we go. Because rest assured.
Because rest assured, if I wanted to be heard, you could hear me. But we'll just leave it to the microphone to take it from here.
Use that diaphragm.
Feel like Mary Tyler Moore as a ted night. And now, the news. A little bit of that. Okay. With that jovial introduction to a rather sober topic, let's go ahead and get into this conversation regarding the temporary emergency homeless shelter.
There you go. Thank you very much, Chairman Yule, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Director of Facility Services. Your consideration today is a request to authorize the chairman to execute a site access agreement with Right Hand Auburn Incorporated for operation of a temporary emergency shelter, homeless shelter in portions of Building 303 located at the Placer County Government Center, and authorizing the Director of Facility Services to take all actions to implement and administer the agreement on behalf of your board. With me today are other staff to address any technical questions that your board may have as we work through this discussion relative to building conditions, code requirements, or programmatic issues. Our staff includes Scott Battles from Facility Services, Tim Wagner, your Chief Building Official, Brad Albertazzi, representing Cal Fire and Placer Fire. I believe that Jeff Brown and Graham Canous from Health and Human Services, and expected Wayne Wu to be here, but I don't...
Please, sir.
In the way. In addition, representatives from Right Hand Auburn and Volunteers of America are here, as well as interested members of the community. On February 3rd, your board granted a temporary conditional use permit to allow Building 303 to be used for a temporary emergency homeless shelter for housing the homeless. While that action served to allow the county, as the owner of that property, to use the building for this purpose, an additional action to establish a contractual arrangement for the shelter operations is necessary. As you're aware, Right Hand Auburn is a nonprofit public benefit corporation created for the purposes of raising funds to house, feed, and clothe homeless individuals in the Auburn area. Right Hand Auburn has advocated for their use of this building via a license agreement in order to operate the emergency shelter. As discussed at your last board meeting, Right Hand Auburn intends to contract with Volunteers of America for the shelter operations. They plan to be open in the evenings through each following morning, seven days a week. They would be providing a pre-prepared meal provided by private entities within the community, and provide a continental-type breakfast each and every morning. Both men and women would be housed in this shelter, each with separate sleeping, shower, and restroom facilities. Volunteers of America intends to provide referrals to existing community and county-based services, including those provided for mental health, substance abuse, medical care, legal services, public assistance, and job training. And the Right Hand Auburn will be paying for all operational expenses through community contributions. To effect the contractual arrangement, our staff has prepared a draft site access agreement for this purpose that embodies the specific terms and conditions that would govern the responsibilities of Right Hand Auburn in the operation of the shelter. Right Hand Auburn has reviewed that draft agreement, which was placed on file with the clerk of the board's office. And at the time of preparation of the board memo, there were two items that were in disagreement. And just for your purposes, the building that we are speaking about is in the box. This doesn't seem to be... Whoops! Now, I've really done it. Don't let me repeat that. The Building 303 is in the box that's contained in the drawing above. Based on your board's prior direction, staff has prepared the agreement in the context of a 90-day pilot program. This is consistent with a temporary use permit, a conditional use permit. And as a short temporary use, this allows for greater flexibility in the requirements for physical improvements to the facility that are required prior to occupancy. Initially, Right Hand Auburn requested that the agreement provide for an automatic extension for an additional nine months, subject to the discretion of the Director of Health and Human Services. Since that time and through discussions with staff, they have agreed to the 90-day term. I'm subject to the opportunity to return to your board to request an extension consistent with the term of the temporary use permit, which would allow for an initial, potentially a one-year term. As noted in the board memo, Right Hand Auburn initially believed that the building could be utilized for an emergency homeless shelter, subject to the completion of only minor maintenance items. Since that time, they've discovered that to use the building, more significant and costly improvements are required, including accessibility improvements, upgrades to the fire suppression and alarm system, installation of interior emergency lighting and exit signs, and improvements for restroom facilities to facilitate the use of restrooms that were previously used by the sheriff. Presented in the PowerPoint is the building footprint of Building 303. The area outlined in dark hash is the area that would be used by Right Hand Auburn for the shelter. The area to the left is a shop area used by Facility Services, and the area to the right is an area used by the sheriff's laundry. So, that would basically depicts the entirety of the building and the various uses that are proposed. In investigating the improvements that I've just described, their estimate is that the cost of these improvements would be approximately $90,000. Since your last board meeting, staff working with the fire officials, Chief Building Official and Scott Battles, we have been able to clarify a little bit about the requirements that would be necessary. And we originally thought that fire sprinkler systems would be required throughout the entirety of the building. But based on classifications of various uses, we've determined that the county shop area and the sheriff's laundry are not required to be fire sprinkled. And so, just in looking at the cost estimates that were prepared by Right Hand Auburn, that would decrease costs of about $14,500, because originally, we thought that with the shelter operations, that the entirety of the building would need to be fire sprinkled. Nevertheless, the improvement costs of more than $75,000 are still of concern to Right Hand Auburn, especially given the potential short term of the agreement and the potential residual value of these improvements to the county. At this point, Tim Wagner, Scott Battles, and Brad Albertazzi have evaluated the code requirements for use of the portions of the building that would be utilized for the county, and have determined that most of the improvements that Right Hand Auburn is required to construct would not be necessary for the uses that the county has. So, for instance, the ADA paths of travel are not necessary for the expected occupancy levels that we might have if we reused the facilities, and the entire facilities for shop areas. And as I said, the shop-type uses would not require a fire sprinkler alarm system. In addition, they're doing some renovations for ADA to restrooms and so forth that obviously are very particular to their shelter uses. I believe that Right Hand Auburn will be presenting to you an alternate proposal that would suggest a cost-sharing agreement for some of the more permanent improvements that are done, I think in particular, the fire sprinkler system. And should your board choose to want to consider that, the site access agreement can be modified accordingly. Page 67 of your board package contains a summary of the material terms that are in the agreement that has been prepared. It is in draft because we have been...
What page? You can...
Page 67.
No, we begin at 73.
I beg your pardon?
We begin at 73 in our board packet, so probably not 67. Maybe 78?
Exhibit C.
Exhibit C?
I'm sorry. 74. 74. Sorry.
There we go.
And for the benefit of the public, I'll just go through very quickly what the terms are that would be contained in the county's site access agreement. And that would be a term for 90 days following completion and inspection of the required improvements for the shelter. There would be no extension of the term permitted pursuant to our agreement without the express approval of the Board of Supervisors. And so, we would recommend that if your board is interested in that, that you direct us to return prior to the 90-day period and do a review of the efficacy of the program and any concerns that may have presented itself. We've established a 45-day period to allow for construction of the improvements required for occupancy that would not diminish the 90-day shelter period. We're requiring compliance with the RHA, or Right Hand Auburn Volunteers of America Agreement, Scopus Services, which was provided to your board last evening, and I'll be talking just briefly about that. Right Hand Auburn would be paying for all costs of improvements. That is our recommendation. They will be, I think, presenting a counterproposal. They would, and have agreed, to pay for utilities associated with their use for water, sewer, electricity, and gas that's estimated at about $1,400 per month. They would provide waste disposal and janitorial services at their own expense. This use would be a temporary, less than 24-hour use. Hours of operator access to the building would be from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Client use would occur from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. There'd be a limitation on the maximum population within the building, and that would be no greater than 49, and that would be inclusive of all staff that may be present in the building overseeing the operations. RHA, the Volunteers of America, and the county would participate in twice-monthly community meetings that would be scheduled by the county for the purpose of reporting on operations and to receive any input that the community or even the county in this partnership may have relative to the operations. As it's drafted right now, there are no pets allowed within the shelter, but should kenneling facilities be provided, the county is agreeable to have those outside of the building. There's a prohibition on cooking and medical-type facilities and services being provided within the building, and that is because of building code and other technical requirements. Right Hand Auburn and VOA would be required to provide insurance and indemnification to the satisfaction of county council and the risk manager. Right Hand Auburn would be required for compliance with all state laws, including building code, environmental health regulations, zoning and land use requirements, construction labor laws, food handling, et cetera. There's a requirement for compliance with applicable state penal code provisions regarding sex offenders, and compliance with the temporary use permit that was issued to the county at your last board meeting. As I noted, the full text of the draft agreement was placed on file with the clerk of the board's office. And except, I believe, except for the issue of cost sharing on the improvements, I believe that Right Hand Auburn is in general agreement with the site access agreement. Right Hand Auburn, working in concert with the Volunteers of America, has prepared a contract scope of work that would implement the requirements of the site access agreement and direct their day-to-day operations within the shelter. That agreement includes the process for guest intake, minimum staffing levels, and they've prepared that there, proposed that there would be two staff, or three staff, two overnight, but one staff person in the early portion of the hours to be able to set up and do arrangements for community service connections and agencies. It describes emergency and security response protocols, establishes daily report requirements, requires the maintenance of guest records, and based on the discussion that ensued last Thursday with Robert Marbut, we've agreed that the records that would be developed would be consistent with the homeless management information system database, which will, I think, be useful as greater efforts continue along this line. It provides for program participation requirements, in other words, the hours that clients may come to the shelter, and the rules regarding weapons and, or lack of weapons, drug, alcohol, those kinds of elements. It indicates that prohibition on state penal code 290 registrants would be part of their rules, and it identifies their screening protocols that would be attached to identification of those individuals. They've also agreed to cooperate with law enforcement efforts and allow visits within the shelter by law enforcement staff. And they have agreed to participate in the twice-monthly meetings with the county and community members. Facility Services, Health and Human Services, and the sheriff have reviewed that scope and believe that it is appropriate for the shelter operations. And the scope of work would be made a part by reference of the site access agreement and compliance with those provisions would be required and be enforced by staff in our oversight and management of this agreement. So, in order to proceed, staff seeks your board's approval to authorize the chairman to sign the site access agreement, following incorporation of any changes that may be directed today and following execution by Right Hand Auburn, and a request that you direct the Director of Facility Services or designee to implement and administer this agreement on behalf of your board. So, that concludes my presentation, but there are other staff here that are available if you have any questions of me or technical questions that they might better answer.
Questions by board members, Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody for working together to get this back on today's agenda. I know it was a really tough timeframe, but I really appreciate everybody's efforts to work together to try to get to something that could come in front of us today. Couple of very quick questions, I think for Tim. I understand the restriction on medical services and food preparation. Why no counseling?
Again, Tim Wagner, the head of the Building Department here for Placer County, thanks for the opportunity to address your board and Supervisor Montgomery to answer that question specifically. I don't believe counseling would be an item that we'd be interested in. It's a preclusion to this. I didn't understand counseling was an item that we were talking that couldn't be provided. I understood Health and Human Services was going to be assisting in some of that advice and directing them to other services, and really, that would be consistent with this use and not providing another type of use that would require licensure and those types of items. So, what we're being very careful about is there are some care facilities that require specific licensure through the state and not trying to place another burden on this operation with some licensure requirement. So, I didn't understand counseling to be one of those items that would be precluded here.
Yeah. So, if I understand the terms, counseling, which I'm assuming is just sort of talk, is prohibited as part of this, and I'm really just trying to understand what the reasoning for that is.
I think what we envisioned happening were referrals outward to agencies and referrals out to the Department of Health and Human Services, to their resources. But I think that within the hours of operation that are available, which would be between 3:00 on, those activities could occur. What we were trying to avoid was a permanent 24-hour occupancy of the entire building, given the temporary nature of the conditional use permit. But I think that the counseling activities are something that could be consistent with the use as envisioned.
Okay. And I would just encourage us to really look and see if that use is compatible with what else is being proposed, because it does sound like there's certainly some value in providing those services along with the referrals to external counseling sources. I'm absolutely delighted to hear that HMIS is going to be part of this. It was one of the things that I took away from Dr. Marbut's report last Thursday night is we need to start telling everybody we partner with at any level that they've got to participate in the HMIS data collection and sharing. Understanding... to participate in the HMIS data collection and sharing, understanding that it's up to the individuals to agree to be in that. But if we're going to be partnering with agencies and entities, we need to, just like with the criminal justice report, we need to start doing a better job of collecting data and collating it ourselves. I scrolled all these notes that I really can't read now, which is a little bit unfortunate. Oh, I know, Supervisor Eular at the last meeting made a great suggestion, which I didn't actually see reflected, or it was reflected partially in the comments, which is kind of the Oversight Board, the Citizens Group. I want to make sure that we have county employees specifically on that group. And it talked about community members, but I think it's really critically important to include county staff from the Dewitt Center as part of that Oversight Group.
The way that it was structured in the agreement, and I'll have to find exactly where we're referred to, the meeting was, as we've talked with council, what we envisioned that it would be for standing participation would be representatives from the county, Health and Human Services, Facility Services, the operator, and Right Hand Auburn, but that we would make announcements to the community and to any employees within the government center or even the businesses that do business there, that they would have the opportunity to show up on a come-as-you-like-type basis.
Yeah, I will just tell you that I would be much more inclined to give a specific seat on that Oversight Committee to someone who's an employee at the Dewitt Center, maybe not associated with Health and Human Services, but one of the other departments. I don't know if the rest of my board is interested in that, but it's just something that I think really gets to some of the employee concerns that have been expressed to us. And then last but certainly not least, on the question of the costs of improvements, and maybe this is a question for Brad Albertazzi, my understanding is they've come up with a figure here, Jan has, I believe, of $32,500 for a sprinkler system. Can you talk a little bit about the fire watch alternative and how and for how long that could be implemented and under what circumstances? I'm pretty sure that's a Fire Marshal question.
Brad Albertazzi, Cal Fire, Placer County Fire. To answer your question, the fire watch, the chief has laid out he'd like to have two people that are dedicated to that fire watch, and they can't be doing anything else while the folks are there. Their qualifications, we would like to train them and go over any issues that they have and get them in line. What are the questions?
They could be volunteers, is that correct?
Absolutely.
They don't have to be paid staff?
No, they can be volunteers, we would just like to train them.
Okay. That was, and so that's an acceptable substitute, at least in the interim for a sprinkler system?
Not, that is going to be allowed while the sprinkler system is being constructed. So while during the time that the sprinkler system is being constructed, we'll be able to allow the people in there, but underneath the fire watch.
And when you say-
It's not in place of the-
Okay. And when you say constructed, is that actual construction or is that planning, purchase of materials, pre-construction as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it? You answered them all?
Okay. Other board members have any questions before we open up to Right Hand Auburn to come forward and make their presentation?
Actually, I have a question. Mr. Chairman, the 90-day period that starts when there is an occupancy permit provided, it doesn't roll, they're not using up their time during the period of time when they're making improvements to the building, correct?
That's correct, and we anticipated a 45-day construction period to-
Mr. Duran, if I could, we have placed in the agreement an outside date for the end of this particular initial term of August 31st, 2015. In the agreement, it states that if the commencement of shelter operations begins after, I think, June 2nd, there would be a shorter than 90-day period. The intent was to put an outside date on this agreement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery, your light's still on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Just wanted to make sure you did anything else.
It's the button that doesn't want to turn off.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments by board members at this time, Representatives of Right Hand Auburn, if you would please come on forward.
Good morning, Honorable Board. I'm Jan Haldeman. I'm a local contractor, and I'm on the board of Right Hand Auburn. Let me give you a little history of what's happened. Within the last year, someone came up with the idea of using the barracks as a homeless shelter. We looked at the place and saw that it needed some minimal improvements and decided that we would take this to the county, and we would take care of the improvements and pay for the Volunteers of America to staff the homeless shelter. Since then, the county has decided that housing homeless folks was a different use than housing prisoners, and that we would be required to do approximately $90,000 worth of improvements, mainly fire sprinklers, upgrading fire alarms, ADA upgrades, emergency lightings, and so on. This is significantly different than our original proposal. And by the way, what Brad was talking about, about the fire watch, this doesn't preclude us from spending the $32,000 on the sprinkler system. He's just saying that while we're doing it, that we can have people there as fire watch, but it doesn't save us any money by having fire watch. We learned just yesterday that if the county changed the use from prisoner housing to material storage and a maintenance building, that there would be no requirements for the fire system, the ADA upgrades, or anything. Now, I'm not a PhD, but I am a PHS. This doesn't sound right to me or some of you supervisors. In case you're wondering what a PHS is, it means that I graduated from Paradise High School. Most of us here attended the Marbut report the other night. Bottom line, there's a real need for the shelter, and not just an overnight stay, but a 24/7 shelter. We are all in complete agreement with this. With the county, city, faith base, and business community all participating, we can make this happen. But right now, we need to take the first step and open the overnight shelter. Dick Azavito and myself got together, did the math, and decided that we could find 25 donors at $10,000 apiece, and this would fund the VOA for a year. But wait, we can't ask folks to donate money for a shelter that may only last for 90 days at the county's discretion and cost $160,000, including the improvements. We're all business folks. It makes no sense to take the risk for that amount of money. We could actually house 50 people a night in a two-room motel at $70 a night for three months. That's a lot of money. We need a reimbursement plan. You have before you our suggestions. Basically, we would be using 56% of the building but improving 100%. If we are asked to leave after 90-day trial, we would want 100% reimbursement. In other words, we'd want the $90,000 back. If we stayed for a year, we would get reimbursed 89%, two years, 78%, and so on. Basically, we are depreciating our portion, our 56% that we're using, our portion of that over a five-year period, and basically we'd get, we would get reimbursed 11% per year. If we stayed there for five years, we would have $56,000 invested in it, and the county would have their building fully fire-sprinkled and ADA'd. I hate to bring up what you approved for the animal shelter, but $90,000, our improvement costs, is less than one-half of 1% of the $22 million cost that you have allocated to build a dog pound. Shouldn't humans be worth a fraction of a dog? Right Hand Auburn wants to open this shelter in the worst way. The county needs to quit throwing up roadblocks at every turn. After hearing the Marbut report, you surely know what the recommendations are going to be. You should be doing all you can to help us now before you are asked to do it on your own. Let's get this done. Questions?
Was there a written proposal that outlined the reimbursement request that you have? That would be helpful.
Bridget Barnes. We prepared this in fact, to give County Council a copy yesterday after the county had also supposed to have been distributed to the county.
You have five.
One clarification. When Mary mentioned this change in percentages, we were not aware of the fact that Fire Marshal was not going to require, we hadn't heard that until we heard that this morning, that the entire building. So the cost, if the cost goes down to 75,000, then it's 75,000. I was trying to be very careful in the written proposal to say whatever our actual costs are, there's no floater on top of it or anything of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Duran, your question?
Yeah, Jan, I'm just going to start my comment by saying that you catch more flies with sugar than you do vinegar. But I understand that, you know, the scenario has changed from what it was when it started and what it is now. And, you know, understandably, the cost is what it is, but, you know, I don't have a problem taking a look, at least, and I'm just speaking for myself, at some type of reimbursement. It may not end up to be the reimbursement that you might want, but I'm open to at least listening to what the proposal is, so.
Well, we're open to that, too. This is just our initial suggestion, and we really want to move forward with this. But can you imagine us having donors put up $160,000 for 90 days?
No, I do this for a living, so I understand the economics of it completely. But, you know, all I'm saying is that the cost is what it is. If my fellow supervisors have, you know, the stomach to talk about a reimbursement program, then let's talk about it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
So to follow up on Supervisor Duran's comments, my grandmother said you catch more flies with honey than vinegar, but same idea. I'm also willing to talk about some sort of reimbursement. I expressed this yesterday when we met. My concern frankly is I don't think this board can get to a decision today on a particular reimbursement. And so then my question becomes, what does that do to actually moving forward with this? Jerry, do you have any insight into that? I'm not sure we can take the action that's being requested today if we still need to negotiate a reimbursement.
Well, Jerry, the question is, is the reimbursement material term? Because it sounds to me like all the other terms-
List 1 to 22 are pretty material, and that this question is really-
If I could, Mr. Duran, the agreement is structured in such a way that if your board provides direction today on a specific reimbursement proposal, we can amend the agreement fairly readily to accommodate that. That agreement would then be presented back to Right Hand for their signature. The agreement will not be presented to the chair until Right Hand has signed an agreement. It would essentially be a direction from your board in whatever direction you choose to go today.
But it would, just to clarify my question, by default, put this entire process farther out into the future?
Not necessarily. It depends on the action of your board today. If you do arrive at a reimbursement proposal that you vote on and direct county staff, including our office, to amend the agreement and present it to Right Hand, you can do that today. Otherwise, if you choose to continue this another day, too, that's certainly within your prerogative to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes?
I just want to let the board aware that I'm not going to support a reimbursement agreement, so for the interest of discussion, at least you know where I stand.
Okay. Supervisor Duran, did you have something else you wanted to add before?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, let's hear from other folks at this point.
Supervisor Dan Appel, pastor of the 7th Avenue Church here in town. First of all, I'd like to say that if you look at it from your long-term use by yourselves, staff recommendations make perfect sense on the reimbursement issue. You win, you get an upgraded building, and everybody loses, I mean, the rest of us lose. On the other hand, if you look at reimbursement as an investment in the good of your constituents, in the good of your community, in the good of your business, then it makes all kinds of sense. $90,000 is a very small investment to make in solving a problem that has been bandied about for at least 18 years with no solutions. So I would suggest that you consider reimbursement, and praise the Lord that you have a group of community people that are willing to do so much for so little for the people in our Probably for the first time, you have a group of community leaders who are willing to reach out and do everything they can to solve a problem that you've had to deal with for 18 years. And they deserve all the support, it would seem, and I hope this sounds like honey and not vinegar, because that's the way it's intended. You know, we're proud of our supervisors, that you finally have had the, whatever hormones it took to-
Very nicely managed.
To get as far as we've gone. We hope you continue to when it comes on the reimbursement issue, because it makes it easier for us to go forward with Right Hand Auburn. But you should also be proud of your community members and all that they have committed to doing and do everything you can to support, would seem to me. I'd like to address specifically the issue of other services. I think that all of the nonprofits in the area will do everything we can to continue the services that are not provided at this shelter. My own church provides mental health, counseling, medical, dental, optical, and believe it or not chiropractic care, and we're in the process of working to, with a dermatologist to do tattoo removal for prison tattoos, that a lot of these guys are not proud of. So we're doing everything we can. The St. Teresa's of Avala is doing everything they can, the Interfaith Food Closet, the Salvation Army. We will do all we can, but it also makes sense to keep certain kinds of counseling and certain levels of counseling at that center where everybody is in one place, with the understanding that they're going to refer long-term intense counseling somewhere else. Whether it's short-term alcohol, drug, Social Security, Veterans Administration types of issues, it makes sense to do it in one place, and we hope that you'll allow us to do that as well. Again, as a community leader, I just want to thank you supervisors for all you have done and continue to do, move forward on this. And we want to thank the staff. You know, we all come at this looking through a slightly different lens, but all the staff has done in such a short time to try to make this work, we just want to express our appreciation. Thank you.
Thanks Pastor Dan. Bridget Barnes, again, I wanted to clarify a couple of issues that have come up in these points. Specifically for Supervisor Montgomery, the issue on the counseling, there's going to be an evaluation. Leo's group will talk to and evaluate all the folks that come in. As everyone heard last week, there is a long-term process where people stabilize during which an evaluation occurs. And the concept over this 90 days is to really figure out how best to do this. In all of our conversations with Mr. Brown and other representatives from Health and Human Services, they have indicated that they will participate, that when we make calls, they'll come over, et cetera. So I believe that a lot of the 90 days, and if I'm putting words in County Council's mouth, I don't mean to, but the concept of keeping it fixed at the 90 days is a true testing ground for how best to integrate the services that are already there, as well as to figure out how we can bring future services in. And in the meantime, the Marbut study, well, your recommendations will come in, and you'll be able to consider those and apply them as necessary. As you all know, when this all started late last summer, the idea was we just didn't want anybody else to die on the road. We were trying to treat it much like the Samaritan concept. Get them up, get them someplace clean, get them clothes washed, et cetera. And over time, and in collaboration with representatives of the county and many people that we've talked to, including all the supervisors here, this concept has grown and expanded so that, as you can hear, from what we've committed to do and what VOA has committed to do, is a professional operation run on a private shoestring. The reason that you hear some vinegar in the voice is because no matter what I've been able to do, and no matter how much sweet talking I've tried- been able to do, and no matter how much sweet talking I've tried, I haven't been able to move it from ninety days further, so that I could present to business community leaders a, a diminution in value over time. So what we are looking at is, an agreement that says, on any basis, whether we've done something wrong or otherwise, you can basically pull the plug at the end of ninety days. The only time, and I want to stress this, every proposal I've made, written or verbal, is the only time there's any reimbursement from the county, is if it's actually pulled after that time. So, it's just to reimburse for the private line of credit that several of us have agreed to execute to cover the capital improvements. That's it. The rest of it's full operations cost, that's the money that we've raised from St. Teresa's, business people, et cetera. And, so I just wanted to make that clear. This is not an attempt to flip the cost over to you on some kind of pig in the poke presentation. It was really in response to changes that were given to us in order to bring the building to the clarification that we needed. And then if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Supervisor Montgomery?
So, one thing that I just want to be very clear on is, the request that came to us was ninety days or a year. And so, that was the original request that, that came to us. And I think it was really on that basis of looking at a ninety-day pilot program, basically exactly as you described, that, that this board was, was willing to start that conversation. Now, I don't think I've heard from anyone on the board that at the end of ninety days, we're gonna yank your permit. I think the intent of the board is, let's look at a ninety-day pilot program, and if it truly isn't the fifth horseman of the apocalypse, let's talk about continuing that. And so, I think it's just really critically important to, to really recognize that maybe we're having two different discussions here. My personal belief, and I expressed this yesterday to Jan and to Tori, is, I think this is gonna be successful, and I think at the end of ninety days, this board's gonna look at it and say, hey, that worked really well. Let's figure out how we continue this program. So, to be fair to this board, we're not suddenly saying, oh, it's ninety days and we're yanking it. That's not what we're saying at all. What we're saying is, we're willing to look at a pilot program for ninety days, which is what Right Hand Auburn proposed. In, in your initial contacts with us, your, your request was ninety days or a year. This board said, we'll look at ninety days, and then we'll reevaluate. And I think that's still the intent of the board. I mean, I think the board has been very direct and very straightforward in our dealings.
Oh.
And again, my complete expectation is, this is gonna be a resounding success.
Which we hope for, too. Let me make something clear. I'm not saying that the board has changed. What had, what happened is, when we originally submitted, I proposed it as a temporary use. I was going under code sections that I was presuming would be agreed to with, by county council, that this was a temporary use, and all of the improvements that are now a mandated requirement in order to open would not apply, because although it's going to be a ninety-day use, those improvements kicked in is where, where the change is. You are right, I did come in. I was trying to get it open at the, before winter hit the door, and all of that is true. So that was why, when the improvements began, the stack-up of the improvements continued, I was saying, oh, well, we need more, we'll need more time in order to absorb it. And my idea of a reimbursement agreement was, was to thread the needle, to get us open in full compliance with everything the county wants, preserving my operational monies, because I have to look at it from a budgetary standpoint, for Leo's operation, so that he can comply with everything that's being required in the scope of work, and, and at the same time knowing that, for, that the clear language, even with all the intent, and we want it to work. I mean, we wouldn't be trying this if we didn't want it to work, right? Is that it'll go beyond that. That's what our hope is. But I, but I'm a lawyer, too, and I have to say, okay, worst case, what's going to happen, and therefore, I have the concern.
Supervisor Duran?
Well, let me float this. I've had an opportunity to digest your proposal here, and this is what I would propose. Now, and this is based partly on what we heard the other night. One of the things that Dr. Marvitt said is that, you know, these, these kinds of touches, you know, have a tendency, once they get started, they go on forever. And, and I know that your goal is not to have something that goes on forever, right? The, the next step in this process is finding a physical location of, of doing the work that you can provide, different things, and which will probably be reflected in what Dr. Marvitt's report comes out a month from now. So, my proposal is, is as you go on line three here, and this is just an if, if the use continues beyond one year, yada, 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 when you get down to year five, there's a forty-four percent, we make up that forty-four percent, and the county is whole, we're not obligated to reimburse anything at year five. And if you can accept that, I can, I can support that.
What do we do if the ninety, if something happens and it all goes away at ninety days, though?
Well, that's the risk that everybody has to take. You, you know, we're, we're going back to your, to your...
Yeah.
Initial one-hundred percent. I, I don't have a problem with one, two, and three. All I'm saying is, is that five years...
He's moving your way, Bridget.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, five years into the deal...
We're done.
That we're done.
It's fully depreciated in a year.
Fully depreciated. The county has no more obligation to reimburse anybody.
Oh, that was my intent, because the rest, the building was yours.
It wasn't in there. I'm just saying that it goes from fifty-six percent to one-hundred percent.
I'm sorry.
Done.
And if that's what I wrote, I misstated it. You correctly interpreted what my intention was.
The, the, the end result is, is there is a built-in incentive, if it goes beyond the ninety days into a year, that we're looking for alternatives, right? As opposed to continually using this building.
I, I would agree with that, with, but, and I say but, not because I disagree with your proposal, it's just that some of the things that Mr. Marvitt said, made me think that the county may significantly change how you want to go for it. You are right. What we were thinking was, we'd be in the building a year, max two, find the location, get it built, the county would approve it, and we'd move on.
I'm not approving a, a five-year plan. All I'm saying is, is that at year five, we're even, and that's that. That's something that I could, that I could get behind. If the rest of the board has a stomach for that, that's up to them, so.
Okay.
Supervisor, what do you have?
Uh, yeah. Probably a good time to just chime in. So, I probably should know this, and maybe it's in the staff report or one of them that's somewhere, but Mary, what's, if this issue was not before us, and we just sort of erased that whole notion, what would be the longer-term plans for this specific building in the master facility plan the county has for its facilities?
Based on the, the uses that are in the, the wings that are surrounding it, those are shop uses and, and storage uses. And so what we would envision is that there would be, for instance, consolidation of, of shops that are associated with, with the facility services department that are scattered around, and I think we would look to gather those up. There's discussions about some consolidation of surplus storage, and also some of the HHS emergency products that are, that need to be on the ready. So basically, storage and shop kind of use is consistent with what's there in the other buildings within the three-hundred series of buildings.
So shop uses could reflect the fact that the sprinklers could be of some value to the taxpayers?
I, I think that, that what we've been able to find, based on the discussions, is that lower levels of shop usage do not need to have fire sprinklers, but there are some uses that definitely would benefit from it, if you have the storage of flammables, welding-type functions. So clearly, there are some shop functions that would benefit by having a sprinkler and alarm system that, that would be proposed there.
Okay, so, just maybe a good time to chime in. Colleagues, Bridget and Jan in particular, you know, I'm open, I'm looking for a solution. I am trying to balance taxpayers' responsibilities, obligations, value, as it relates to this particular question, and the ninety thousand in specific, while we're looking for, what's important to me, a strategic long-term plan as it relates to the homeless question that the county's been pursuing. So, so for example, horrible outcome for me would be, a couple of months from now, we have a strong recommendation to have a Auburn area facility, but it's not here. And that we, we, the board agrees to pursue that site in earnest, and we, and we do, in fact, exercise the ninety-day discontinuance of this, of this contract. I don't think anybody knows the answer to that question right now, but looking at all extremes, you know, my hope is that we actually can develop a relationship and have ultimate success, and I have a level of confidence for that, otherwise I wouldn't have said the comments that I've made, get into here. So I'm, I'm open to all kinds of ideas and innovative thoughts as we go forward and finish up this hearing, but with that, I'll just, my sixth sense of humor also is just enjoying, yeah, I'm good with vinegar and honey and sugar, thinking, thinking of the five of us fly characters, actually, I just try and deal with them for the time being. So for that, I'll close out for now, and let the hearing continue.
All right, Supervisor Montgomery, did you have something else you wanted to?
Yeah, I, I really just wanted to say, in terms of Dr. Marvitt's comments and presentation last Thursday, and not yet knowing what he is going to be bringing forward specifically, I don't know what that does to this proposal. I, I really don't. You know, I, I see possibly some very different alternative outcomes. One frankly, based on his comments, that you need something that's twenty-four-seven, close to resources, you know, that says, in some respects, this is perfect for that. Others that say, he was very skeptical about an overnight model. And so, I, I would just warn us all to not borrow too much trouble for the future. As I say, I think the ninety days, my expectation is, this is gonna be successful. It can come back to the board. I think if, if it's successful, and we haven't seen the problems that, that some folks out there are, you know, envisioning, I think this board is rational. I think the board's gonna look at outcomes and say, are they good, are they bad? How do we make decisions based on that? And so, I can't predict the future, certainly, I wish I could, but I think if the ninety days works, we can look at a year. I think if a year continues to work, we then have the, the conversation longer term, as Supervisor Duran talked about, with that five-year term being a zero percent.
Being the absolute...
Yeah.
Well, I'm not talking about a term right now. I'm just saying, according to your proposal, you know, the, the agreement is what it is, but if you wanted to add sprinkle, and say at five years...
Zero percent.
Zero percent, I'm okay with it, so.
Right, and that was why below the...
Ms. Barnes, one, one second. Jack, your light is still on. Did you have additional comments? Because we do have other members of the public I'm gonna want to get to.
Yeah.
So Supervisor Holmes, do you want to make a comment now?
We tell the public.
Okay, thank you, all right.
I was just gonna respond to both of them in the sense, and then that I don't have anything else to add about the reimbursement, was that, based on what he was saying last week, I thought it was important to point out that it was our understanding, and the reason I'm trying to leave it, I was really trying to not have a hard and fast agreement, except that, in the event of termination, these kinds of reimbursements would kick in, because if in fact the sheriff's department is done with the laundry facility, and we are operating and you're satisfied, we intend to come back in. Our first proposal that we submitted last fall was for the whole building. It got truncated to the fifty-six percent. So I fully expect that percentages and things would adjust, depending on how much of the building we were operating from, how long, the same with the hours of operation. All of those things would be open to further expansion, and that would adjust these percentages. I was looking for, you know, an agreement of reimbursement based on certain equitable mathematic principles, and leave it at that, so that we'd know we were going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget, okay. I just have a question, going back to our first meeting discussing this, there was quite the conversation regarding, obviously very similar use to what we had before, clearly a very different user than what we had before, an institutional user at the county versus a private sector user. My question for perhaps county council, maybe it's building, I don't know, what was the determination that triggered the installation of these, or, excuse me, that triggered the requirement of the installation of these measures, the, the ADA, the fire sprinkler, in particular the fire? Was it the determination of the use, or the change in the user? Or both? So, that, I guess that's my, my question. If, if, if the county were still operating the facility, it was, we were doing this, would that trigger the chain, or the, would that trigger the requirement for the sprinklers, in your opinion?
Not sure if this microphone's on here, but yes, it's, it's irrespective of who the operator is. It's really looking at the state law that has these categories that describe for us what type of intended function's gonna occur in there, what type of occupants might be in the facility, what type of hazards and life safety risks that might go into that type of an operation, and that's what defines for us, really then which use group that we would fall within. And so, whether it was the county, or a private operator, or even a third party outside of that, it would still have the same requirement because of the overnight stay with human occupants.
Okay, and, and how is it that we were historically able to avoid us having to go back and do that retrofit while we were still using it as a, for, for our purposes?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I didn't look back twenty-some years ago, I believe, was when the barracks might have began. I didn't look back at the model code back that far to see if it would have instigated our...
So it was simply grandfathered use at the time. When the fire code changed, so long as we continued in the similar use, then we didn't have to go back and do any retrofit.
Exactly. Looking at it, how it has been used, and, and what the change might be today, and what the law would provide to us through the building code about what that change in use might look like.
Okay. And the gentleman behind you were whispering amongst themselves, was there additional information that came from, or was that, were you just concurring with his thoughts? I'm wondering if there's additional thoughts on this point? If you would please, yeah, just to approach, jump up the mic here.
No, no additional thoughts, but going back to twenty years, when it was the Placer Consolidated Fire District, I wasn't the fire marshal then, but the best of my recollection that the sheriff's department wanted to use that building on a temporary basis, until they built the, like, the jail was being built, and it just kinda like, it just continued in the use and never got upgraded like maybe it should have.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Kirk, if I could, Brad, Brad, before you go away, I want to follow up on Kirk's question. So I just want to be totally clear. So, if the sheriff's department were to come back in and say, hey, we want to use the barracks again, we would be required to install the sprinklers? Because that...
They left and come back?
They've already left, they're gone. It's empty. If they were to say, hey, gosh, we changed our minds, we want to come back and keep our minimum security prisoners there, we would have to put sprinklers.
I would say, yeah, you'd have to put sprinklers. That would be my, my, the way I would go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, but I think that's got it, thanks. Very helpful. Okay, thank you for that clarification, appreciate that. Other folks who might want to address the board on this side, please come forward. Jennifer Yoidz still on?
Yes, good afternoon, or good morning. My name is Antoinette Sabella. I'm a member of the Right Hand Auburn, and I am also volunteer at the Seventh Day Adventist Auburn Renewal Center. As the therapist who works with the folks that come in, walk-ins, appointments, I want to comment on the importance of counseling. I just want to tell you a story. I had a gentleman who was sixty-two years old, came in, talked to a medical person, our doctor, on that day, but then called me and said, this gentleman is dying. He only has, you know, a couple months to live. What can you do for him? So I took him into my office and interviewed him, you know, found out what his needs, what was going on with him medically, and then I proceeded to contact the county, Health and Human Services. Being a retired social worker from Children's System of Care and Mental Health for Placer County of fifteen-plus years, I'm well-connected with the services that are provided by the county. And I feel that that experience has benefited in my retirement from the county, in that I have, I still have connections with all the services. So I was able to contact Kathy Denton's team, got to explain to them what the situation was, what insurances this gentleman had. He was homeless, he was camping on the lawn out there in front of the welcome center. We were able to hook him up with the Heart's Foundation, they took him in, and were able to give him money for the street, and he died six weeks later. But at least he wasn't in the street. So when we look at counseling, it's not like this, you know, it's not always the hour session... So when we look at counseling, it's not like this, you know, it's not always the hour session. A lot of times it's about crisis counseling. You know, it's about finding out what's happening in the moment. You know, I have walk-ins, people that come in and, you know, they don't know that we have those services there, but when I can see their face, I can see what's going on with them and I can pull them aside and I say, hey, would you like to talk? So I could, I just want to express that there is a benefit to having counseling. You know, it's like at the moment, crisis counseling. And then, and then then those referrals can be made out for more permanent, more long-term services to the county. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address the board? Please come forward. Please.
Victoria Comedy. Excuse me. Still.
Okay.
Sorry, my blood sugar's so low. You were reading, talking about sugar and honey. I'm going, I just kind of wanted to, again, talk about this issue of services and that we are precluded from providing those. I thought it was interesting this morning on the page of the, from page of the Auburn Journal, we had a CPA who provides services at the senior center. And I'm not sure how their model differs so much from ours in terms of being able to bring in those professionals. It's just a question in my mind. As to the $90,000 or $75,000, there's just something that goes through my mind all the time when I start hearing about county monies and I don't pour over funding or public works for that. I stumbled on one time a poll to prevent, to support a net to keep golf balls from hitting cars costing $50,000. And I always retain that in my mind when we're doing cost comparisons. So I say that $75,000 is worth one and a half pools. And you balance that against serving a lot of people, I think it bears consideration. The other thing, as to services, if you're, if Dr. Marbit's model of needing a 24/7 shelter is giving you pause at all, just reminding you that this, by having the shelter where it would be, the services that are juxtaposed next to that are DACE, PERS, independent living, the Welcome Center, probation, mental health, chapada, the adult system of care, including APS, mental health and drug treatment, job training, St. Teresa's, and little more than a mile away is the Seventh Day Adventist Church. A little further, but within somewhat of walking distance are parole and social security. So essentially you have kind of a de facto, if you pictured a dome over the service system at DeWitt, you have a encased 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service system right there, whether that, that's sort of all under one roof, if you picture that dome, but essentially those close-by services are, I think, meeting the intent of what Dr. Marbit was talking about. Thank you.
I'm Paulie Bauffer with Placer People of Faith Together and the Restorative Justice Project Initiative. I think that Right Hand Auburn's heart is in the right place. But in listening to Dr. Marbit's report, and he is the expert, he's the consultant on, in the cities that have the best homeless programs in the country. And he said that we whack a strategy, a county-wide strategy. And what, he said, we have a lot of tactics without strategy. And Sung Su said that the tactics without strategy is the noise before defeat. We don't want to be defeated in this. Lives are at stake, human beings, valuable human beings, lives are at stake. We can't afford to fail. Well, I think what they're doing is well-intentioned. He also suggested that these late-in-the-day centers that you go to are disruptive to the entire process of healing, getting people off the streets. And part of his critique of what the Gathering Inn is doing, and Sung Su's doing great work, she's getting a lot of people off the streets. But there's better models, more successful. And if the county's going to invest money in it, and we want to invest in something that's going to be successful from the beginning, like the 24/7 come-as-you-are centers, I think there's a need for that in our county and there's a need for that in Auburn. And he said that the long-term plans, that we put these, we do these 10-year plans out and we never get there. If you need something today, do it today. And while I don't think we should stop them from using it, I would probably oppose, as a member of the community, oppose giving them back their money, lost brain fart, sorry, after 90 days if they're not going to comply with the suggestions or the model of the consultants.
Gary Mappa, Applegate. I wasn't going to get up and talk today, but I...
You say that every time.
I know. But I guess I'm compelled to talk. The Marbit study revealed many things to me in things that I maybe haven't shared with Right Hand Auburn or other people, but my observation in his discussion was the importance of a 24/7 shelter. What we've been doing is just phase one of a strategic plan. It's not just something I woke up one day and said, let's go after the barracks. It was all strategically planned and the incentive was to motivate Placer County to step up to the plate and do something regarding more long-term solutions. This location was just looked at because it was available now. It took months to get to where we are now. So from the time we started discussions, everything has kind of changed until we were able to get into the barracks and start describing what the needs are going to be, what it's going to take to get to where it is now. Right now, we're at the position where we can start a facility, we've created the baseline or the platform that can be a 24/7. We need county, city, business, good faith-based and nonprofits, per Marbit's report last week, to really make it work. So we're here ready to hand to the community a facility that will jumpstart whatever it needs to be to get to a 24/7 permanent. And one of the questions I asked Mr. Marbit or Dr. Marbit was how long would it take you to do a 24-hour shelter from day one? And he could only reference a project down in Texas that took four months, but it was a project that had county, city, business, and faith-based and nonprofit. So that's what I was looking for, was the collaboration of the community, the investment from the county, the city, business, and the non-faith. And they're here. So what I would ask is that we take advantage of this opportunity, the passion and the energy of all the people that have gotten to where we are now. Staff has done a fantastic job. And I hear things at this meeting today that kind of surprised me. I always wondered how the barracks operated as a place for prisoners. And then today it's revealed that, well, they kind of were under the radar screen maybe and things didn't occur that should have occurred. So we're going to be picking up improvements that maybe should have been there already for one. But I think it's important that the board consider what's in front of them today. Any questions? Thank you.
Just brush your hands. How many additional folks want to speak? Okay, great. So I see three, four? Okay. So do four. All right, go ahead.
Good morning. I am not a member of Right Hand Auburn. Excuse me. I am, however, an Auburn resident, North Auburn, but still Auburn. I would like to point out to the Board of Supervisors here that there are several of us who are wondering at the use of the DeWitt Center and the plans to turn it into a retail location. And I want to point out to everyone here that that is a resource. If you look at the letter of the law compared to the intent of the law, that entire center was earmarked to be for the public good. That is my understanding as a woman. I don't have a real degree. Why are we battling this back and forth now? If that was the intention then, it should be the intention now. Are we not a community that cares about our veterans? How many of us are veterans? Do you know those statistics? Too many. We need to use that resource for the people, not to make money. Have a heart. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. There were three other hands. Let's go ahead and step on forward here, please.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Rich. I'm a community member. I just want to say that my daughter was one of your statistics. We lost her February 4th, 2006 at 1:32 PM. As far as services, which my husband and I tried to get her into all kinds of services, but she's an adult, so she could walk out. You need your 24/7. I don't know about sprinklers. I don't know about what's happening here, but you paid $50,000 to an expert to tell us you need 24/7. You do not need the shelter as it is. Pull your money, get everybody, all those quarters together, get the face space to take them once a week, just like Dr. Marbit said, while you're figuring out what you need to do. They can take them a week at a time. They have the showers, they have the facilities that they don't use all week, apparently. That is what needs to be done because people are dying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sit. Good girl. Good morning. My name is Michelle Cowan and this is Nikki. We are also North Auburn residents. We want to speak really quickly just to emphasize a couple of key quick things. Number one, Right Hand Auburn has their hearts in the right place and I'm going to probably not be the most popular person in the room when I turn around, but we agree that there is a need to help the homeless. I have a background in working in this industry, but as Dr. Marbit said in his meeting with us, it's better to do nothing sometimes than to do a temporary something. And the potential for this to turn into something fantastic, if we wait a little bit and have all of our ducks in a row, is much more important than rushing into a potential 90-day or even six-month situation. He said a temporary something, and his experience had lasted 22 years. It took him that long to shut it down and to have a permanent something. So I just caution you, if you're going to put your money out, or any of these groups should be thinking, if we're going to be spending our money, it should be planning a 24-hour permanent something and this temporary emergency that was potentially going to be for the winter months to get people out of inclement weather, which we all agree, people needed to be out of the weather. We want to make sure as residents of, in this community, that it's done properly and that's way more important than rushing into something that has this stigma of being a potentially 90-day temporary emergency thing. And having the services available, they're available now. People aren't getting that reference right now, but having them all centralized and having a campus situation instead of just a building or a part of a building, that needs to be considered. And I've heard a couple of situations where even the board has mentioned, and this bothers me as a person with a disability, but mentioned the skirting or postponement of making things accessible or ADA regulations being met. That bothers me. In this group of people, you're going to have people with disabilities and the ADA is a federal law that can't be skirted. Thank you.
Just to be clear, no one on this board has suggested that we not fully implement all the ADA requirements. That has been something that we've all been very staunch about. What we have discussed is an alternative, potentially temporarily, to the sprinkling issues, which are not ADA-related in any way, shape, or form. But I want to be really clear that no one on this board and no one on staff has ever suggested that we not fully implement all the ADA requirements that we're...
It may have been a slip of the tongue then, but I did hear it. And it may have been just a postponement of, but it, I did hear the words. So I just wanted to caution, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those. And then the gentleman over here, you were the only other one to raise your hand. Were you still interested in speaking? Yes. Are you still interested in speaking? Are you still interested in speaking?
Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is, good afternoon. My name is Jerry Mifsud. I have a television show here in town and I write for the Free Newspaper, the Placer Sentinel. I'm also a member of the Area Homeless Forum. You know, I see that we're honing in on counseling and reimbursements and what I'm hoping now is that we don't end up having a further quandary to what we're trying to accomplish because we're very, very, very close to doing this. We've saved many faces as we've journeyed in this. Your faces, political faces, the public. Can't help but sense the feelings of Mr. Haldeman. I don't believe it's from any of her, per se. It's debate. We need to work together on this and that's what we're doing. We've accomplished a lot. The public with the Volunteers of America coming forward and which resembles a gathering in, the public. We have our pastors, their faces are here, the face of Jesus, if you want to call it that, Pastor Dan or Pastor Mike, but the face that we're really honed in on is the face of the homeless people. So when I think, and when I hear about, we're talking about counseling, they have their mental health issues before they hit the street, while in the street, and when they're first going to walk into whatever we're going to be able to provide for them. And at least with the different kinds of circumstances that you want to lead them to, the first thing is that kind of counseling. So we have to hone in on the minute they walk in the door and how to, how to send them on, but we need to embrace in them. As far as reimbursement goes, well, anyone can see, and you can see the further quandary here that we're realizing, what was the building? What was it for? Should it have had this and that? If we keep bouncing that back and forth, we may not properly address that proper kind of an issue, which is reimbursement. But we have, we have come to a crossroad here where we're hearing the word permanent shelter. And eventually, that's what we have to, we could put a lot into it. And the lady that formerly just walked up here reflected what Dr. Marbit was. By bringing him in, it showed your intelligence, your bravery, you should be open to something that just very may criticize how you've been proceeding as we've been going along, but still, we realize that you can and you will probably, more than likely, take his advice and reflect that, that the public wants. Because we all want to save our face, your faces, and mostly the face of the homeless people. We know that here, he told us 80% of what is here comes from our own community, our own houses, our own schools. So these are our homeless. I can't thank you enough. I'm sorry if I ever heard... I'm sorry if I ever hurt anybody's feelings. I was told that I said something mean, and it's passion. Jan was up here, that's passion. There's nothing mean, there's nothing, there's no vinegar here. We don't need vinegar, we don't need honey, but I can't tell you how much I thank all of you for hearing and seeing the face of homeless people. We'll get there. Let's get that permanent shelter. That's what we really need. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you. And that was the last hand that I saw. Is there anybody that still would like to be heard at this point? Is there anybody up in Tahoe that would like to be heard on this item? Okay. Seeing none up there, we're going to go ahead and bring this back to the board. I have a couple of quick questions. As I'm looking at the layout there, and this is for Right Hand Auburn or the operator, I guess, more specifically, so if you wouldn't mind stepping forward. What in the aforementioned study, big part of the problem is how do we deal with families or single parents with kids? How are we anticipating meeting those needs in this kind of a facility with the separation of the men's sleeping area and the women's sleeping area?
Leo McFarlane, Volunteers America, Auburn resident. This facility, as we're planning on operating, will be dealing with single men and single women.
Okay.
Any families that show up, we're going to be prepared to refer for vouchering. Salvation Army and the churches are working to have that as a sidebar effort so that we wouldn't be expecting children into the facility.
Okay. Thank you. That answers that question. And then, just an opt, I don't have any, does anybody else have any questions for the opera? Yes?
I did. I actually had a question for Leo, so that was great timing, asking him to come up. So just following up on your comments about families and single individuals here, that's completely consistent with Dr. Marbut's position, which is you should never mix single individuals with families.
Correct.
And so I'm actually glad to hear that on this case. The facility that you operate in Sacramento that I visited.
Yes.
That actually is, while it is for overnight only and the folks who stay there can't be there during the day, they do come back consistently every night. Is that correct? I mean, I saw shoes and people's possessions there.
Right. That facility we toured is an 80-bed men's shelter. It has been historically a 24-hour-a-day shelter, where we had the counselors onsite, the housing specialists, and all of that. But over the years, the recent years, funding's been reduced for that program, and that's why it's operating now as a 10-hour-a-day overnight shelter for men. You can stay in that facility for up to 30 days, and so the clock's ticking once you come in. So if you have a bed tonight, you'll have that bed again for the next 29 days while we try to work with you in the short time we have you to connect you to other resources. And I was struck by the earlier presentation from Scoey, and dealing with the various elements of services that are provided within that. And as I was looking at that one slide that Supervisor asked to go back up there again, there were at least 22 before it went off slide, 22 services that I saw that are standard within any of our 24-hour-a-day program activities that we cover with homeless, to reconnect them, to move them through the system, and make them more independent, as well as about 10 or 15 additional services that weren't even on that chart that we create to make sure that we clear up all those hurdles that have put that individual into a homeless situation and would otherwise be a barrier preventing them from moving forward. So there's a lot of work that goes on within a 24-hour commitment program that can really change the lives. But you saw a good listing of the types of services that would be included in a 24-hour a day operation.
And I just want to reiterate something that may have gotten lost in your response, and thank you, and that is that you have the experience running that 24-hour, 7 facility that does provide those services. So while that's not the model that we're proposing for this.
Correct.
You do have that background.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Leo.
Sure.
Okay. The only other, it was observed earlier that, given the proximity of other services close by within perhaps a mile radius, that we ought to consider that we're at least meeting the intent of providing those services. And my concern with that is, I think if that were the case, we would not see what Dr. Marbut identified as the growing chronic homeless population that we have. Clearly, as I've said all along, I am not interested in providing a tool to enable a lifestyle. I want to provide a tool that allows people to get out of this lifestyle. By no means should the measure of success of any facility we provide be the number of people we are accommodating. It should be the number of people that no longer need accommodation. And so the chronic nature is what concerns me of our population, as was discussed in that study. And so clearly, how the services are being provided now isn't meeting that if we're finding ourselves with that position, or that situation of the chronic homelessness. I think we are, I think we're deluding ourselves to think that a temporary shelter is going to do anything other than provide temporary comfort for a few people for a few months. I don't see how a temporary shelter provides a path to actually addressing the problems associated with the chronically homeless that we're experiencing. And so if we are going to move forward with temporarily using this facility, are we in any position, in any way, looking at this facility and surrounding, immediately surrounding facilities as a possible longer-term solution? And I, as a board member, am certainly not prepared to say that, as of today, we are. We're in that position. And so what I'm struggling with is, do we make the investment in the temporary facility knowing that we do need a permanent solution, and this may not be it? And how quickly can we mobilize in support of something more permanent and not spend the limited resources on retrofitting the building that won't ultimately be used for that purpose? Unfortunately, I don't have that answer, but it gets right at the heart of the question that you're asking that's about the reimbursement. And my question for your group is, do you really think, let's just say that the board said, we don't agree to the terms of the reimbursement. Do you, as a group, think, given where we are right now in the calendar year, and where we are in what we are preparing by way of a final report to the board, based on what you've heard thus far, that the investment of those dollars is the best thing in terms of moving this community toward a permanent solution? Or might it not be better to keep your powder dry at this point and say, how can we spend those limited resources in a fashion that is working more toward the permanent solution?
Mutton, Jack.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. So I hope you understand the nature of my question here. I am not in any way, shape, or form prepared today to say, this is the right location for a permanent shelter. And the last thing I want to see is any of us spending a bunch of money, which unfortunately it's come down to. And when we first met on this in October, November, I certainly, I think like you, thought, well, this will be easy. We just repurpose from its existing use, you know, we can open the doors the day after tomorrow, right? Well, unfortunately, it's proven to not be that easy. And, you know, whether we're blessed or cursed, we've been dealing with a lot of 70-degree weather here in Northern California, and fortunately, it hasn't created the same kind of hardship that might otherwise have been experienced during the winter months, which was originally your concern for the emergency shelter during the winter months. And so having kind of missed the season, and fortunately, the consequences of that not being as severe as they could have been in a normal winter, is this still the right, is this the right solution? Is spending the money on a temporary facility the right solution? And is it something that you would, as a private nonprofit, want to do with your dollars absent the reimbursement?
Well, first of all, to follow up on something Mr. Wiggins said, if there are all flies and you're the head of this, that makes you the lord of the flies.
Fly.
Sorry about that.
Very good. Can I make my piggy references and Asmar and all those things?
Having said that, you know, nothing succeeds like success. And the problem we've had for how many years in this county is that we've had no success. We've been stuck. The inertia has been horrible. What this will do will allow us to begin to overcome that inertia and move forward, because I think you as supervisors, we as community people, want to find a long-term solution to this. But up until now, we haven't shown the will to pursue a long-term solution. This will at least get us rolling. That's the only, I agree with you. That's the only justification for doing it at this point, is we'd be doing something. And to be able to show, yes, for instance, Volunteers of America can manage a facility and do it well. The county is committed to working together with the private sector to making something happen. It's better than finding ourselves here a year from now, asking the same questions.
No, I don't disagree with that, but you reminded me of one of my favorite sayings about government, and that is that all too often, government says, this is a problem, we have to do something. This is something, let's do it. Well, wait a minute, is that the right something to do? Or is it better, given where we are now, as I indicated, both with the calendar and with the evolution of the report that the board has commissioned, and if I may say candidly, the exposure of this issue to our board, and what I have seen become a fairly resolute position by our board that we need to address this problem and that we are going to take steps to address this problem, as we've had these conversations over the past few months. Is this the right step at the right time to spend this money and move this forward in this fashion, as opposed to taking a look at what you have seen thus far by way of direction from this board to engage this, and maybe rededicate those resources toward that long-term solution at this point? Just asking the question.
Well, it's kind of interesting because that's a very thing that we've been debating as a private board of directors, about what was the right thing to do in light of this, in light of the Marbut study, et cetera. But I'm going to step back for a minute, and those of you who know my political predilections will appreciate some of this. It is my experience in dealing with government, not the specific board members here, but government as an entity, in all of its facets, is no matter how well-intentioned, the amount of time that will be spent in follow-ups with the recommendations that will come from Dr. Marbut, the committees that will be established by the county of its departments to coordinate and then produce a long-term plan, the identification of the location for the shelter that would come out of this, and a campus that would then come out of it, because that's where Dr. Marbut's really going. He has a concept of a total campus, which I don't disagree with. It's just, these are all things, to me, that sounds like, if you started tomorrow, Supervisor Uler, and you directed staff to apply all available resources, you're five years out before you break ground. Just my experience in Placer County. Because there's so many hurdles you've got to go through, and then there's the funding issues, and which of your funds are going to be applied to it, and the yada yada, and on and on and on. So the question is, is whether the private sector in Auburn takes the bull by the horns and tries to get us started. We know it's not the panacea. We know it's getting started. The more our board thinks about it, the more we realize that we will have to come back and ask for a modification to go to 24 hours at some point if we're still in the same location. We wanted to start at DeWitt for the reasons you already know. One, this was an available site. It had been used to house people on a temporary basis, so it seemed like a natural location. It was close by to all these other services that are already available, as well as being close to Auburn Faith if you needed it for emergency purposes, and it was right down the road from Chapadae. So from our thinking, if you were going to pick a site, and it was far enough away from the day-to-day operations of the county in terms of CEDR, et cetera, that if folks were coming in and out of the shelter in the back, they didn't have to necessarily impact everybody. We were trying to pick a good location. So that's our thinking. Is there a risk that we fall flat on our face? Absolutely. The part of this that we hadn't anticipated long-term was that the improvements to the building would be of such a nature that if it was terminated short-term, there would be no way to recover it. That's the only thing that really, in our minds, still has to be worked out. It is absolutely true that with the weather getting better, unlike what we were originally planning, we may have less people, but that works in our benefit because originally, when we walked the site, we had planned to put a lot more beds in here. Now we're going to be limited to a net of 47, max. So it's actually, really, it is better to start now with anticipating less people coming in because it's not going to be 20 degrees at night. But that's fully admitting to you that before winter, if we were in the same location and you were otherwise happy with what we were doing, we would be hoping that the rest of the building is going to be available, and we can convince building that we should take over that portion that is still being utilized by the Sheriff's Department for laundry, and expanding it to beds. Because 47 is actually a difficult number, given what the informal numbers that Father Mike and Pastor Dan and everybody had collected and sent to Dr. Marbut, they all come in at around the same range, which is 80. 80 is the kind of the ballpark number in town right now.
Okay.
So that's my answer to you, yeah.
Supervisors?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First of all, I want to let everybody know that I've been skeptical from this, from the start. I met with Gary Mapp and his group, and I expressed my skepticism. I met with Pastor Dan and expressed my skepticism, and Dick Azavito and others, and expressed my skepticism. I have voted in favor of moving forward, the last three times it's been here, although my friend Gus Thompson got it wrong the first time. I have supported moving forward to this point. I want to get to Dr. Marbut's study. First of all, I have to say, Dr. Marbut had great things to say about the Placer County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Zender, and Officer Flood from Roseville. They have a handle on all the homeless people. They know exactly who they are, where they're supposed to be, what programs they're in. And I know this as a fact because I did a ride along with Deputy Zender on a Saturday morning, and we hit all the spots where the homeless hang out. What I got from Dr. Marbut's study was several things. First of all, the chronic homelessness in Placer County is above the national average for some reason. Local people that have lived here, they have family connections, and that's, those people, the chronic homeless need programs. They don't need an overnight stay. They need healing. They need to be in programs as long as six months, not something overnight where they're going to go back to the same conditions that they were to begin with. We don't have those programs. Salvation Army does in Sacramento and in San Francisco for indigenous people that can get into those six-months programs. The issue for us today, and what is being done, is those people that are homeless for a year or less have opportunities to keep from going into the chronic situation. Programs like the Salvation Army in Auburn that provide rental assistance, utility assistance... Programs like the Salvation Army in Auburn that provide rental assistance, utility assistance, vouchers for people to stay in hotels until they get back on their feet. The Gathering Inn does a tremendous job, and people that are initially homeless to find a path back into being home, into their homes, into different homes. And they've been very successful over the years. So the issue, as far as I can see from Dr. Marbit, is to keep those people that have been homeless for less than a year not to get into the chronic category. Dr. Marbit had a lot of good things to say about what's happening in Placer County. But also, he said about this situation, that we may be doing more harm than good, because we're not addressing the long-term solution. This is not a solution. This is just a method to get people off the streets overnight, and then they go back into the community. I'm not going to support moving forward with this, because I want to wait for Dr. Marbit's full study, so I understand how we can best move forward. I'll be glad to help in any way we can move forward to a long-term solution. I also represent the people in North Auburn that are being affected by this. And I'm getting phone calls. I'm getting meetings with people. I meet people in the store. I've met people out of the county that work in the county that are very opposed to this. They're afraid to sit forward, of course, because they don't want to be seen as heartless individuals, as some people use me of. But anyhow, that's where I stand. We need to have a long-term solution. I want to wait until Dr. Marbit's study is back fully before we move forward. Again, he said, "This option may not work, and it may do more harm than good." So that's where I stand, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to oppose this.
Okay. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I have a little bit different take on what was said during that meeting. But I want to focus on the folks that Jen and I talked to out here at DeWitt. And most of those folks that we talked to fell into that number-one category, which were the ones that you could save. They were the ones that had just come out of a bad situation. They either lost their job, or they lost their opportunities. So I did not, and there was a veteran that we talked to, who, you know, had been out on the street, I think, three or four years, who had a ranch up in Ofer. And he was, you know, and every one of those people said that they would go to a place, you know, if it was provided. So, you know, I guess I'm having a little difficulty having this portrayed, that we are addressing the needs of folks that can never get out of that cycle. I don't see that. And it hasn't, and that data hasn't been, you know, thrown out, and I don't think Marbit even looked at that particular situation. So, you know, my thought is, is that a long-term solution is needed. And as a matter of fact, I've been working on, down in Roseville, with the Ladros Project, on a long-term campus-type situation, you know, that could be located out off of, across from the Justice Center, that would be a campus with transitional housing. But I do believe that something needs to be done, and that I do also agree that we can't put Band-Aids on things anymore, and that we have to face this harsh reality. And the one thing that I can take away that gives me a little bit of comfort is that if there is a 24-hour situation that's needed or recommended, that the VOA have the ability to transition from a limited time to a 24-hour time. But in the interim, knowing that, you know, and that's why I'm focusing on five years, just like that you said, is that I do foresee a lot of hurdles, just like with this particular property with environmentals and all these other types of regulations, that something needs to be done. Kicking the can down the road, I don't agree with that. So I would like to see if my fellow supervisors have the stomach for this option that we talked about a little bit earlier, that would provide a reimbursement in the event that it did not, you know, for whatever reason, the plug was pulled, but with the caveat that after five years, we're completely out of it. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. Supervisor Montgomery?
So, what I heard Dr. Marbit say on Thursday is, he doesn't like the single-night model, and that it's really not effective. But his direction, in response to a very pointed question about, "Well, what about this Barrick's proposal?", was, as long as this is just the start of getting to that 24/7, and making that your absolute laser focus, it meets with his expectations. He doesn't love it. He certainly did not like the single-night model. But his comment was, as long as you realize that this is not the end, but just the start of getting to that 24/7 model, it's okay. He didn't love it. I think none of us love it. But I think we all agree with Dr. Marbit's position, that it has to be the start of something bigger, and more important, and more comprehensive. Bridget, I loved your comments about governments as an entity, but it's not us, so thank you. Dr. Marbit did say it took him something like four months or six months. Okay, just going to throw out there, that was in Texas, which doesn't have CEQA or any of the hoops that we have to jump through here in California. But again, that goes back to Dr. Marbit's comments about, as long as this is the start of getting to that more permanent solution, it's something that he could live with. Jack, in response to your sort of general question to the board, I would support looking at that kind of a reimbursement and figuring out how to make this work, because it is going to be five years. No matter how much time and passion and dollars we put to it, there's a process that we have to go to, and as long as we all recognize this is the start of the process, not the end of it, I think we can get there.
You know, and I've done the economics. At the end of the day, the county gets a building that's won, that's got its sprinklers. And if, heaven forbid, something happens to one of our departments, they need to temporarily remove someplace, it's already set up to do that. So, you know, enough sad for me.
Supervisor Wiggins?
So, grabbing the question by the throat, I guess, I'm willing to support disagreement. The part I like least is the reimbursement part, but I'm willing to support something that we can come to concurrence on amongst us. But I'm kind of in a place that I think I've heard all four of my colleagues reflect, interestingly, in that for me, this is a start. We have work that's being done that's indicating already that we need something different than what we're considering today. And so, in expressing my position, I want it also to be clear that if in 90 days we had some bad experiences, I'm going to be very willing to discontinue what we embrace today, if we embrace this idea. But I think what's taken me across the line, particularly if I embrace all of Kirk's comments, is that what I see as concurrence in the community about the bigger vision, and I see some unusual energy in the community, be it with some people that I know, and I have a lot of confidence in some of that, having experienced debates where we disagree with some. And so I know the commitment is unusual, and I look at it, I guess, as being a startup, that it's going to morph into something different, but there's some unusual energy and thought that's gone into this, and I think that partnership is the real value here. And I think that, including even $90,000 in hard cost, is worth that price, as long as we all share those concerns and the same longer-term vision.
Do we have a motion, then, in order for the board to take action?
I'll need to go forward with the alternate proposal on just that one piece on the reimbursement that was presented by--
Right-hand arm.
And does staff have enough clarification on what the board's intent is here? Does staff need additional clarification?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we would ask for a little bit of direction on a few of the issues associated with Mr. Duran's motion, specifically whether there is a maximum amount of the reimbursement. We would suggest that the motion identify that, if in fact your board chooses to do so. We would amend the agreement by adding an exhibit, essentially a reimbursement exhibit, if we understand the motion correctly, consistent with the February 23 letter from Right-Hand Auburn's counsel, that we would provide some basic payment terms that would be associated with that, including a compliance with the agreement, and that the reimbursement schedule essentially be a sliding scale down. Of course, the reimbursement would be based, if your board at a future time chose to enter a new agreement or extend this agreement. Otherwise, as we understand the motion, there would be 100% reimbursement payable at the end of this initial 90-day period. We would also ask for clarification on the counseling issue. As we know, the current staff proposal does not permit counseling. There'd be a slight modification needed to the exhibit B of the agreement.
Well, I think the clarification, and I brought that up, is that outside groups aren't coming in, and I think that's what--
The concern was, is that there would be groups that wouldn't have the required licensure in order to provide those services. So if it's our folks, or if it's folks that are providing services under our, you know, have a contract with us, they've been fully vetted, I think they're okay. Is that the--
Yeah. In the best of all possible worlds, I would like to see outside folks come in--
Sure, sure.
--as long as they're insured and have all the appropriate licensure.
Right.
But, you know, if that matters too problematic, I think anyone with whom we have an agreement and has the appropriate licensure, whether they're a county employee or a contract employee, should be offered that opportunity.
Right. And I think that addresses a concern that you had about having folks there, that, you know, anybody walking up off the street, I want to help people not being correctly licensed, sure, and insured.
But that provides us adequate direction.
Thank you.
And then, you asked the question previously, however, about the, is there a maximum amount of reimbursement?
That's correct.
That you're seeking, and so--
Yeah, and I actually, Supervisor Duran, if you don't mind, so what Bridget wrote in one, in her letter of February 23rd, is, "Upon conclusion of use at 90-day period, Placer County reimburses RHA for 100% of costs expended on permanent safety and fire systems." To me, that does not include things like the ADA compliance, because that is not either safety or a fire system. Is that how I understand that? And is that how you understand it, Supervisor Duran?
Yes, that's how I would understand it.
Okay. Because ADA compliance is not a safety issue--
Right.
--it's an ADA compliance issue. So there are certain things that would not be covered under this 100% reimbursement. That's how I understood that proposal.
If I could supervise, Montgomery, we understand the letter. Similarly, we would ask that any reimbursement obligation, of course, be based on the presentation of actual costs incurred, so we can segment out the exact nature of the reimbursement.
Yeah. Does that clarify your question?
Actual cost.
Actual cost, yes.
Does staff need any additional guidance on that?
We reiterate a question. Is there a maximum dollar amount that the board is authorizing? The reason being, the staff proposal notes that the capital improvements and building maintenance funds have adequate funds to reimburse an amount. We would ask that a maximum--
So you're asking if the board would like to include a maximum amount for reimbursement?
That's correct.
I'll leave it up to the maker of the motion in a sec.
The scope of work that was provided yesterday had a total of $86,850 on it, so I would say not to exceed that amount.
Right.
Sorry to amend your motion.
No, and because that price, according to what I've read, is going to come down because of the $16,000 that's not applied. So that, so the max will be 87, as Jen said.
Okay. We have a motion. I don't think staff needs any additional clarification. We have a motion in a second. Any other additional comments under discussion? The only additional comment I'm going to make is, I am not going to support the motion. And the reason I'm not going to support the motion is, I am prepared to support this as a truly temporary interim location. What I see evolving here in front of me is, this will become the interim location where we will operate a 24-hour-a-day facility until we find the right space, maybe three years, maybe five years, certainly not four months, where we find the right space to do the permanent facility. And while my tour of the facility out there gave me comfort, that we could appropriately manage the site and the anticipated needs of an overnight facility for a limited period of time, my tour of that facility does not give me the same level of comfort, that that is the right location for a 24-hour-a-day facility that offers an array of services. And so, that's the reason why I will not be supporting the motion. So with that, we'll call for a roll call, please.
And just to add--
Yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor Duran.
--on that, is that by me putting this forward, I'm not convinced, you know, I haven't seen the report that says it can be a 24-hour operation. What I'm saying is, is I see the start here, and I'm on a play-as-you-go kind of rollout. So I just want to make that very clear.
Okay. Thank you. So a roll call, please. Duran?
Yes.
Wiggins?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler? No. Thank you very much for a good discussion on this topic, and we look forward to your success.
We have a five-minute break.
Yeah, we'll take a quick five-minute break, and then--
Close session, lunch, and then come back, or you--
Yeah, actually, that's not a bad idea.
Still got another hour, Mr. Stone.
Do we really?
I'm taking a five-minute break, whether you give us one or not.
Yeah, no, no, no. You're including the close session, though.
Why, pitiful attempt, humor apparently, Joe. What's the thing, is it an insult at all?
No, 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 no. I just, my favorite part of word of the flies is-- Okay, let's go ahead and jump into three quick Lincoln-related items, and...
Go ahead, Will. It's all yours.
Mr. Chair, board members, Will Garner, Placer County Public Work Department. And I'm going to go ahead and actually go through all three items, and then we can go back and do the actions, if that's okay. The first one, actually, is the biggest one, is Item 6C, going back to 2012. And actually, I want to recognize David Melko, mostly because he was here since 9:00 a.m. waiting for this item to arrive. But David Melko with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And the PCTPA was instrumental in the early times of this in getting the City of Lincoln and us together to talk about greater coordination of service delivery for transit in the City of Lincoln. And I'd say for the past 18 months, we've been specifically working with the city on forming this agreement that we have before you today for approval, which essentially results in us, Placer County Transit, operating this transit service in the City of Lincoln for the City of Lincoln. The city, of course, would still maintain their responsibility, certainly as a city council, to make decisions on level of service and funding for transit services. And there would still be city staff liaison that would pay attention and deal with the county on transit. We would operate the fixed route directly with our own employees. The dial-a-ride would be operated under a contract, which is the next item that we'll talk about. And the city would fully reimburse Placer County on a fully allocated cost basis. So overhead and direct expenses would be included in that, and they fully understand the need for that. And basically, the end, the contract is a $917,000 per year contract. About $815,000 of that is, would be new for Placer County. Those are the services that we would operate new on behalf of the City of Lincoln. I should say that the city is, council is taking this very item up tonight, their city council. And at the same time, on a different item, they're also considering a reduction of their fixed route service to increase the overall efficiency of their program as well, and to have that done actually before we would start operating their service. And that will be a public hearing tonight for their city council. And so that is the, a real quick overview, and there is a summary of the agreement, a one-page summary on 105 of your agenda, and of course, the agreement itself is in the agenda. The next related item is 6D, which is the MV Transportation Agreement, 1159. We have an ongoing agreement with MV Transportation to run our dial-a-ride service in Rockland, Granite Bay, Auburn, Loomis areas. And this, we would use the same agreement with the added cost and service area to provide the dial-a-ride service within the City of Lincoln. And that would be included in the agreement that we just discussed. And this agreement currently runs through October of 2016, and has two one-year extensions possible to it that we would entertain as we get to that point. So, and this also involves a budget revision that would be necessary for the actual end of this fiscal year to implement the dial-a-ride service, probably in April or May, with the details to be worked out with the city and the contractor themselves. So that involves a budget revision in the amount of $55,000, which would be reimbursed by the City of Lincoln to us. And then the third item related is 6E, which is a pass-through agreement of federal funds that we have now had with the City of Lincoln. This would be the second time we've done this. We, they are now in the official urbanized area of Placer County, have been since the 2010 census was counted up. And they are therefore eligible for a different set of transit funds directly from the Federal Transit Administration. Federal transit does not like to have new grantees, and so they use an existing nearby grantee to receive the funds. And we have been doing that, and this would be the agreement to allow us to officially pass the funds through and actually do a budget revision on our part to have the expense of actually writing the check to Lincoln for the funds we've already received from the federal government. So those are the three items, and each one of them has a specific individual action. A couple of them have two actions, and take those up. And of course, if there's any questions, you happen to answer.
Okay, let's go ahead and take them separately. So first, any board members have any comments or questions on Item 6C, the Operation Transit Services for the City of Lincoln? Seeing none, any members of the public? Anybody in Tahoe that want to talk about transportation? No? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion then?
Second.
All right, we have motion, Wiegand, and second, Montgomery, on Item 6C. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And 6D, any questions or comments by board members, or the public, or Tahoe?
Move approval.
Second.
That was a motion by Holmes and second by Montgomery to approve 6D. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call on that one. Holmes? Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Thank you. And then finally, 6E.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Wiegand. Were there any questions or comments by members of the public here in Auburn or in Tahoe? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Revision, budget revision.
No, I don't think he is.
Is it a budget revision?
No, it is.
It is.
Adopt a resolution.
First line.
Oh, look at that, approving a budget revision. Look at that, of course.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Montgomery? Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
All right, why don't we go ahead, we're going to jump past the sheriff, and we're going to jump on down, since we know we still have some folks hanging out in Tahoe. Let's jump on down to the economic development incentives for the Tahoe Basin Town Centers final report. And... And Jennifer, who's going to run point on this?
I'm going to get started, and I'm going to toss it over to Mr. Zender to my left here. Good afternoon, Chairman Euler, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the CEO's office.
Unfortunately, that picture could have been taken yesterday.
Yes.
It is.
Been beautiful up at North Lake Tahoe.
Unfortunately.
It's going to change, though.
Okay.
Get some snow this weekend.
All right, you promise.
Real snow?
Yeah, real snow. Down to 3,500 feet.
Really?
Glad to hear it. So the economic development incentives for Tahoe Basin, the Tahoe Basin Town Centers report that's being presented today is the outgrowth of a workshop discussion with your board last spring initially, as it related to our Community Development Resource Agency work on our area plans. And this later resulted in allocation by your board in July of funding to create an investment strategy and business plan. The report seeks to analyze current roadblocks to investment in environmentally sustainable redevelopment, and to make recommendations regarding policies, processes, investment incentives, and financing. The report was prepared following interviews with a variety of stakeholders and ongoing consultation with those stakeholders, including representatives of the environmental community, business owners, the development community, and property owners in the Tahoe Basin. I'm joined today by David Zender with Economic and Planning Systems to my left, who, together with Joe Decredico of Joe Decredico Studios, just over the other side of the podium there, prepared the report, as well as Paul Griffith, our Business Development Manager. So I'm going to toss it over to David. He's going to run through some slides that present the materials that are in the document, and then we'll be happy to take any questions after that.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good afternoon, Chair Euler and members of the board. I'm David Zender, Managing Principal of Economic and Planning Systems, and thank you for having me here. We've enjoyed working on this project with Jennifer and Paul, and your entire team here at the county. We feel that we've been able to really engulf ourselves into the issues of the Tahoe Basin to evaluate really what's holding the basin back economically, and how do we move forward most efficiently and strategically. And so with that, I have a presentation. We're going to just summarize the results of our analysis for you, and then we'll have a little time for Q and A at the end. So one of the fundamental intended outcomes of the TRPA 2012 Regional Plan Update is pairing ecosystem restoration with redevelopment activities to promote mixed-use town centers where people can live, work, and thrive. And it's with that vision that we've approached this study. We know that people have been working hard for decades to make that vision come true. Yet, it hasn't. And so our charge is to really understand the causality behind the lack of process, progress, excuse me, and then what, more importantly, can be done going forward to tee-up private investments, and to continue to improve the ecosystem, and to provide that place, that third place where people can live, work, and play. So as we've looked at this, we're clearly thinking about highlighting some of the TRPA goals for town centers as we go through this. Some of the things that are really critical there include best practices in stormwater management, reduced trip generation, and improved aesthetics. And the fortunate thing is, is those are the criteria that the consumer is also looking for. So there's a really win-win strategy at work here in terms of providing the type of product that national and international visitors are looking for, and also, you know, working on what's really important in Tahoe, which is preserving and sustaining the ecosystem that makes it all tick in the first place. So the outcome to our study, and then we'll go through some of the details of it, the first is, we do have an opportunity in front of us to establish area plan features that are consistent with our PU to basically realize environmental redevelopment. If we're successful, and we think we have a path, and we're going to suggest a business planning approach toward basically putting a finer point on the information that's contained in this report. But the business plan will detail methods of creating tax revenue out of the private investment, and can also be used to sustain the environment in the region. And finally, providing a deeper and more diverse local economy is critically important. Tourists are important, but residents are equally important, and really, the two play off each other. You can't have a successful tourist economy if it's not a viable local economy for the So a little background, as we delve into this, the challenge has been a loss of market share, frankly, in the Tahoe Basin. What we see around us is everybody is competing for regional, domestic, international visitors. The resorts that are outside of the basin have done an extremely good job of capturing that growth. You can see by the chart on the slide that TOT collections outside of the basin, which is the red line, have vastly exceeded those realized within the basin. And that's just an indicator of a loss of market share as we go forward here. So what can be done? First of all, we don't have the luxury of time as we seek to improve the outlook. Right now, there's a remarkable convergence of economic fundamentals, viable investment groups, town center opportunity sites, and really, I think, an unprecedented level of collaboration between different agencies in the basin, as well as the public and private sectors. So we look at the confluence of all of these factors, and we say that this is a really good time to be assertive and to be moving forward with basically strategic approaches to infill development. So there are strong indicators of market support that underlie that contention. In Appendix A of our report, we detail strengthening metrics that show improved travel expenditures, improving occupancy rates, improved sales tax receipts. All of these things are going in the right direction in the status quo, in the business-as-usual scenario. Imagine if we were able to provide viable accommodations at the lakeside that then provide the visitor the ability to park, and then to move about on foot, or to use alternative modes of transit to get where they need to go. We believe that as opposed to the 3% to 5% increase in travel expenditures and visitation that we see coming over the horizon, that such a, the addition of such units and such accommodations in the basin would have a material impact and improve those numbers substantially over the baseline. The, at the bottom, you can see that the spending from the overnight visiting, visitation sector is critically important to realizing the increase in local tax revenue. So to accommodate that overnight visitor, we have to understand and take on, understand and take on a level of investment risk which is unique and heightened in the basin. Some of these things are just endemic to doing development in a mountain resort environment. You have a shortened season for construction. You have more difficulty obtaining labor force at a reasonable rate. But other things that we do have some control over include the complex entitlement process and the uncertainty around timing associated with that. Right now, the really critical issue is that there is a perception among equity investors, and those are the investors involved at the very early stage in the project, the first money to come into a project. And these equity investors are faced with really massive unknowns about how long their money will be tied up, whether they will ever see a return of that investment, let alone a return on that investment. So these are real concerns for these folks, and what you see is a reticence to get involved in Tahoe Basin projects as a result. So we have to figure out a way to gain more certainty and reduce the risk so that there's some additional upside in the economic equation. So with that, we see that there is a fragmented and confusing entitlement process. Projects are taking routinely four to five years to process, many of which don't even come out of that process. They just sort of have a quiet demise. They just sort of have a quiet demise. Others have made it through after a number of years, and they've been tough sledding to get there. So, you know, the duration of the entitlement process really is a key risk. There's a stylistic graph on the lower-left corner there where you can see that the longer the length of the entitlement period is, the lower your overall rate of return is going to be on a project. And if we can't figure out a way to get the entitlement process down to two or three years exclusive of lawsuits, we understand that lawsuits will occur, but that baseline entitlement program really needs to be about two years, no more than three, to be effective and to be something that would be received well by the community.
Supervisor Montgomery has a question.
Yeah, just as a clarification, if you would, this length of time for entitlement, is that for the eastern county in total, or is it just for the Tahoe Basin portion that we've looked at?
I would say it's a, an idea that has relevance for the larger context, but in particular, right now, we're talking about Tahoe.
Okay, so not necessarily the North Stars, Mardest Valleys, those areas?
Yeah, I think that certainly, the shorter, as a jurisdiction, the shorter your entitlement process is, the more certainty and more investment there will be. So, everybody, regardless of where you are in the county, it's a good idea to have a very brief and predictable process.
No, understood. What I'm just really trying to get at is, is this five to six years, is that really largely driven by projects in the Tahoe Basin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. In addition to shortening the timeframe for approvals, we also think that the county has an opportunity here to be an advocate for quality projects, and clearly, some projects will be more important for the county to advocate or to participate in than others. So, one of the features of the business plan that we're promoting going forward is to develop the criteria by which the county can decide when it should get involved in a public-private partnership, for example, and when perhaps a project might succeed on its own without such participation. The whole idea being that strategic intervention in those exact right moments and times is what can produce the private investment that then produces the public revenue that then can be reinvested back into the area. Continued alignment of entitlements between the county and other agencies, primarily TRPA, is absolutely critical. Joe worked very hard on this, and we absolutely feel that there needs to be fully integrated, very well-defined timeline, and all the fees and all of the other things that go along with that need to be also spelled out in very clear detail. There's some nuances still in the TRPA code and other places where there's some rules that apply to urban development that are really oriented more to rural contexts, and so, we think there could be some cleanup there, clean things up and make it more streamlined. And then finally, coordinating with TRPA to accrue commodities and make them available where they're needed, I think, is really the key. So, making sure that the TAUs are in place, making sure the coverage is in place, and that's something that is critically important as well. One of the features of our analysis was a fully-integrated policy analysis with an economic study. And so, this is a summary of the development economic analysis that we did. We looked at two prototypes in the Tahoe Basin, the first being 120-room condo hotel that's surface parked, and that's prototype number one. And then, the prototype two is a mixed-use project that includes ground-floor retail, other commercial uses, and has structured parking. So, these are representative of two different situations that are likely to occur in either Tahoe City and/or Kings Beach in the near future. What we have found in both cases is that the cost of acquiring the TAUs, whether that's 15,000 a TAU, or 20,000, or even more, when you think about the quantity of TAUs that are needed in some cases, a developer paying upfront for those TAUs is enough to basically push the returns below what we consider to be a reasonable minimum rate, and so, creates a real front-end hurdle for the development community that would be difficult to achieve. So, therefore, there, we believe, is a clear strategy toward acquiring the TAUs on behalf of the development community and where needed, again, based on defined criteria, to talk about public-private partnerships where perhaps those can be contributed as part of a larger deal structure. The other finding here is that structured parking and the cost of structured parking in the Tahoe Basin is much higher than what we see here in other parts of Placer County or in the Bay Area. So, whether that number is 40,000 a space or 70,000 a space, it's still a bit more than what the development community can absorb in the Tahoe Basin. So, again, there's an opportunity here for contributing to offset the cost of public parking, and we have some suggestions in terms of specific mechanisms that could be used in that regard. So, the bottom line is, what we're confronted with today is what you might consider to be a market failure. In a sense, you have a great environment, you have great prospects for improving the community, but yet, things are going very slow. The last major hotel project was over 50 years ago. So, really, what we're faced with today is an environment that's at risk. We have financial risks that exceed rewards. Upfront equity is endangered, and investor inertia is rapid. People are not moving along as quickly as they should be, given the improving economy. So, the solutions are to streamline the entitlements, offset extraordinary costs, and enter into public-private partnerships where you can. And as a result, we feel that it is doable to enact infill developments on key sites, to realize public revenue generated from those investments, and to reinvest that revenue for the betterment of these communities. The graph on the bottom shows a stylistic diagram of property taxing commit through IFD, not redevelopment, obviously, TOT and sales tax over time, and this graph basically indicates that in year 10, we could be at something along the lines of $6 million per year in public revenue as a result of building something around the order of 400 hotel rooms and around 100,000 square feet of commercial floor area. So, those numbers were basically predicated on fairly involved market analysis that's included in Appendix A of the report, and so, we feel that those are reasonable targets to shoot for in the basin over a long period of time, certainly something that can be absorbed within the infill context in these town centers. The capital markets are favorable at this stage. Things are looking better and better for hotels. It has been very difficult to finance hotels built from the ground up. There's been a lot of acquisitions in the industry, and now, we're finally getting to a point where the markets are starting to look at some of the better projects that are out there. So, the outlook is positive in that regard. And what we really need now is financial and regulatory strategies combined to basically sustain what we see as a market uptick and to take advantage of the situation in front of us. So, again, we see the ability to invest, excuse me, the TOT and sales tax revenue, as well as property tax revenue that I mentioned earlier, as it's generated. Property tax increment financing could be through an enhanced IFD, that's the legislation that recently came through. This is a very broad sort of spectrum of projects that can be used for IFDs. Parking is included in the list of applicable projects, and so, we think this is a good match for the parking challenge. But again, the business plan will be the mechanism by which we test some of these concepts and really vet some of the leading ideas and bring it to a finer point. Again, outside funding through low-interest loans and grants. There's also a number of great resources that are out there. We detail a number of these in the report. IBank is one example of that, and there are many others. So, the next step really is a business plan that offers refined market financial review, defines a business case for a strategic public investment, and this provides a bit of an overview of what might be included here as we distill information, test specific concepts, and think about near-term actions. So, this really, at the top, you can see there's what we call a business case, and that interacts with market and financial analysis refinements that would go forward. And those two things really work to test out different approaches toward public-private participation, toward offsetting the parking challenge, toward offsetting the TAU costs, and really getting to a series of viable action steps that you can take with confidence. So, basically, those flow down into strategic county initiatives, which would include some of the things we've been talking about here today, and also include some key funding sources and possible organizational strategies that you may want to take a look at in addition to what's being done today. So, these immediate recommendations are based on the staff report, and then there's a more detailed chart on page 21 of the report. Basically, as Jennifer alluded to earlier, basically, we're looking at aligning agency land use development processes, offsetting extraordinary costs, adopting best practices in parking and funding extraordinary costs as necessary, and those are really the three major categories of recommendations that we're bringing forth to you today. So, with that, realize it's been a long day and appreciate your time here this afternoon, and we're available for any questions.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you very much. Could you back one slide, please? I just wanted to be able to actually read that.
Oh, sure.
Flip through it fairly quickly. And as we discussed earlier with the TAU acquisition on the AA hotel property, I'm certainly comfortable with the county functioning in the role of acquiring the TAUs and banking them and then allocating them. I am going to be pretty hung up in the future on making sure that we get reimbursed for those costs. And so, just when we talk about offsetting extraordinary costs, I think we need to be clear what we mean on that. And related to that is, you use the phrase in there, structured parking.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the same as a parking structure?
Yes.
Multi-story?
Yes.
Okay. And again, that's something that I think we've had one, two possible proposals for, one in Kings Beach, one in Tahoe City, both met with great public opposition, and so, again, that's something that we're probably going to need to really think about how we move forward, or if we even do move forward with that, and what other alternatives. Part of Peters, I'm pointing Peter Kratz back in the back of the room there, part of what he's been doing is looking at parking and, you know, circulation issues. So, I think if we're going to propose something as contentious as parking structures, we need to be really clear on why there are no other alternatives that meet those needs. And then, just generally, I have to say that I have some concerns just about the idea that we should be advocates for good projects. County staff, always CDRA staff, they're not advocates, and I don't think we should ask our planners to be advocates. That really puts them in a very uncomfortable position, particularly at public meetings. And, you know, I always am very comfortable saying, "Our planners are not advocates." Now, maybe we can be advocates, or maybe economic development can be advocates, but I really want to make sure we do not put our planners in that position. They need to look at process and be impartial, and so, I just really want to be clear on that. I just don't want to throw any of our poor planners under the bus. They get enough heat already. And so, and then, I think we should be very mindful of understanding what are good projects, because that becomes something that's subjective that we define, and so, maybe, we need to figure out if there's a way to actually create criteria for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Morgan.
I'm making a moment to Jennifer's first comment. On the TAU question in your analysis, it wasn't clear to me in your comments, but were you referring to the actual cost of the TAUs, or the time delay as a result of getting TAUs for the lack of a bank? Or what did you learn?
Yeah, primarily, the cost I was referring to, but also, you raise a really good point, which is, it takes a lot of time to locate and to acquire these development rights. And so, if you imagine coming in from the outside and having to hire a project manager or an attorney or an agent to basically go out and, you know, turn over every stone and figure out where those are, that gets very expensive. So, even, there's actually an extra expense component when you think about the time required to locate those. So, it becomes even more onerous. That's a good point.
Yeah, strategically, as we work through, that is a provocative decision. My inclination to speak right over Jennifer is, which is, 15,000 bucks a pop, I don't know that that's what the taxpayers ought to be doing in terms of subsidizing things to result in projects, but I'm open to ideas. If it's a deal breaker, we've got to try to find some kind of resolution if possible, but we need to have a good, healthy discussion about all that.
Sure, sure. And the, what I think we've seen on average thus far is closer to 15,000 per pop, so...
Right, that's what we're talking about this morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Graham. Yeah, you know, all of the ideas that I've heard so far seem pretty acceptable, but the one thing that I just want to reemphasize is that the Tahoe area, and I don't know what your comparisons were, what you compared to, there's no other place like it in the world, and the Lord isn't making any more of it. So, there is a cost that's going to be, you know, associated with that. When you move into Beverly Hills, you've got to be willing to pay the price. So, I'm not above, you know, working something out that makes sense, but there's got to be an ROI to the county. It's got to make sense. So, in that context, I'm willing to listen to all kinds of ideas, but we're not building in Lincoln, we're not building in Roseville, we're building at, you know, one of the most beautiful, pristine, environmentally sensitive places in the world. So, we have to always remember that.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
And my only comment, I think, is in response to Jennifer's comment about staffing advocates, and while I agree that while projects are going through our process, staff can't appear to be predetermined, certainly when we have our EIRs on the line and all the rest. However, I think maybe the definition of a good project is one the board has approved, at which point, our staff can act as an advocate when dealing with other agencies and all the rest. And so, I'm certainly comfortable with the staff, when you have a project that's been approved by the board, the staff engaging affirmatively in actually assisting with the project getting built, so...
And I'm fine with that. I just don't want to put the car...
No, I agree entirely. So, I think if the litmus test is, it's a project we approve, and staff is free to then go advocate on behalf of those projects, we'll tap at it.
Absolutely.
I think that should help clarify the understanding on that. The recommendation regarding advocacy was really not to have our regular day-to-day project planners be advocates for whatever project they're working on, it was to actually have a position within the Land Development Department in Tahoe that helped applicants navigate our system, navigate the relationship between our system and the system of other jurisdictions, to really advocate or facilitate projects moving through to make sure...
Our ombudsman position, essentially.
Well, no, it's actually a little bit more proactive than that. The ombudsman always waits for an issue to occur and then reacts to it. This would be somebody assigned to a project to help move it through the system intentionally because of how complex it is and how many different moving parts it has. So, it was a little bit more specific, and there would still be a separate project planner who was more of a neutral role person, but this person was really seen as a project facilitator to make sure it could get through in that prescribed two-or-so-year time period.
Okay, that's helpful in understanding what's proposed. I would suggest that maybe we consider our language and call it something like a liaison rather than an advocate. An advocate sounds like they're taking a very different and specific role than, I think, what I heard you describe.
Well, I don't disagree with that. I think it's, though, the question of where it's housed. For instance, if this position were housed in Economic Development, I'd want him to be an advocate. And if it means that he's got to go over to Public Works and kick somebody in the rear end because they're not replying, then go to Public Works and kick somebody in the rear end because they're not replying. And that's, so, I think that's kind of what you're getting at, is helping through our process, not turning Peter Kratz into the advocate for the private developer. Peter's still got to do his job, it's just this person in Economic Development is, "Peter, are you doing your job?" So, I think that's kind of what you're getting at. That's great. Any other comments by board members before we open it up? Nope? Okay, let's go ahead. We'll start here in Auburn, and then we will get up to Tahoe, and then we still have anybody with us up there for comments from members of the public on the presentation. with us up there, for comments from members of the public on the presentation that we've received.
Good afternoon. Samir Tumuth, Keel, Tahoe. I've been at this about ten years, looking in Tahoe for various different opportunities. And I guess these guys are just a lot smarter than I am, because they came to the same conclusions that I did. Took me ten years and took them maybe, I don't know, ten months, something like that. But I do want to address a couple of the specific things that they've raised. I see essentially, after looking at this for about ten years, four major obstacles. Two of those are the seasonality of Lake Tahoe. You do have some, you know, at least a good summer, still. Hopefully, we're going to get good winters back, but those shoulder seasons are problematic. And so while it is at the lake and it's a gorgeous environment, from a business perspective, the seasonality is an obstacle. That's an obstacle that they face in North Star as well as down in the basin. The other thing is high cost of construction, significantly higher than anywhere else that I've worked, and it is the nature of the beast, and so hopefully, there's a return that matches that. And again, that high cost of construction is something that you see in North Star, Squaw, as well as at the, in the basin. Those two factors alone have caused some fairly spectacular failures in Tahoe. Not in the basin, because there hasn't really been any significant attempts in the basin, but there have been some others in the Tahoe area where those two factors, along with hitting at the wrong time, the economy going down, those alone present some problems. But there's also not much you guys can do about that, unless you can change the weather, or get contractors to work a lot cheaper. There's not much you can do. I think where you have the juice and where you have the opportunity really deals with the other issues. One is the process. The process is very complex, very uncertain, and extremely costly. And part of that is simply because it's not only in your hands, but you have the TRPA to deal with as well, and you do tend to have a more litigious environment up there. So I think to the extent that process changes have been proposed, to me, that makes an awful lot of sense, because the extra time and extra money for sort of a dual process here is significant. But the other thing is that the higher costs, the costs that simply don't exist in Roseville, in North Star, and Squaw, are around commodities. It's not only the TAU's, but there are a bunch of other mitigation fees, and, you know, a whole host of costs that you all are quite familiar with, that simply don't exist anywhere. And so if you start with a baseline that things we can't control are problematic, these other two, I think, are the opportunity that you, as a board and the county, have to make a difference. I think, absolutely, Supervisor Duran, I think the ROI has to be there, and I think that that's at the core of what we're talking about with hospitality projects, is generating very, very significant revenues, on an annual basis, well in excess of anything you'd have to spend upfront to acquire these commodities. So the ROI, I think, is there in multiples. Thank you.
Sandy Evans Hall, once again. I am not here representing the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, just because we haven't had an opportunity to really discuss this yet. But I have been involved, have been involved on the steering committee, and working with David, and gathering some of the facts and figures. And I do have some thoughts about this today that I'd like to express. You know, I think that this is a groundbreaking report that you have in front of you. I think this is the kind of information that we really need in the basin in order to be able to start to incentivize and be able to bring in private investment. Let's face that we haven't had a lot in the basin for, let's see, since the eighties, and even before then. It's been a long time, and so what we're doing is not working. And that's the definition of insanity, if we keep doing what we've always done, expecting things to change. So I really believe that right now, we need Placer County to take the lead in this groundbreaking role, and really empower the staff to move forward to develop a business plan, of which I would love to be a part of. I think our organization definitely wants to participate in, and we would want probably even to expand it to include the Tahoe Prosperity Center, because I do believe that this report is going to have impacts basin-wide, and every jurisdiction around the basin is going to be wanting to be a part of this. So I think that we can take this study, we can, I encourage you to develop the business plan and move forward with that, to recognize that even though we have these higher costs, we understand that we have the higher cost of development in the basin, we also don't have the ability to generate greater revenues than you would say in a coastal area, or Napa. Our average daily rates right now are lower than most of our competitive resorts. So we're not necessarily going to be generating those great revenues to be able to pay off a much, much higher expense of development in the basin. So let's take a look at this. I think it's going to take some involvement from the county to do this. I think there are going to be returns to the county, as well as the developers, in terms of higher sales tax, higher TOT collections, and greater revenues just coming in, even in property tax valuation. So I think those are going to all be returning to the county over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here?
Hey, guys. Dave Ferrari, Kings Beach. Here yet again, and we're still at it. I think we've risen the ashes of the CEP. We've had some unfortunate things happen with this, it was a school project, we've lifted a number of things, and we're still at it, and we're still hopeful, and we're still confident, and maybe as confident as we've ever been, and I think kind of realistic right now. We completely support and understand the incentive plan that you put forward. In reality, our project is pretty rich in entitlements. We have lots of TAU's, lots of coverage, lots of things that even we can give up if necessary. We have a strong buyer at this point, looking very strongly at us. We've worked out at least an interim agreement to keep pushing forward with that, so we feel good about that. I think that the biggest thing I want to urge is that, and I think we shouldn't hedge our bets, but that two-year entitlement process, I think we just have to, you know, we have to instruct staff, and we can't spend two years figuring out how to do a two-year entitlement process. We're just going to have to dig in and do it, and I think that's going to just have to be done, because the economy is going to change, it's a good time right now, and I think that two-year process for us, I think we'll get a project on the ground and up in the air. And I would also just make a quick comment on the new road in Kings Beach. We found that with the three lanes, just wanted to point out to you guys that we did find that this summer, many more of our guests walked down the street, even though there were sidewalks, they could walk out on that edge of the road where the road was flat, and they went up and down the street. And this year during Christmas, when there was a lot of traffic, we actually had quite a bit of business at Christmas, the traffic, as expected, flowed slowly, but continued to flow all the time. So thanks for that, and hanging in there all those years. Okay? And we hope this incentive plan, we vote for it, and we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board, Dan, Auburn? This is the public comment portion, you understand.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, because I called you out.
I'll take, maybe I'm jumping in too quick. But I'm just a Public Works Director for Placer County Public Works, doing a lot of Public Works projects in Tahoe since 2002, and I just, listening to Supervisor Duran and Supervisor Montgomery about private projects, and while I don't try to be an advocate as a staff person going forward with these projects, when they come to us to be looked at, at the staff level, I am an advocate for private redevelopment from a water quality perspective, because I see for ten years so many dilapidated properties in our jurisdiction that just sit.
Sit and deteriorate.
And they shed dirty stormwater into the public right-of-way system that we treat through our Kings Beach Commercial Core Project, for example, and the Tahoe City UIP project from the past. We do a good job, but the water will get that much cleaner once these private properties redevelop. And the science is there that really shows that these, when they sit like the way they do, and you've all seen them when you go up to those communities. I don't want to rush the process and miss things along the way, just for the sake of water quality, but I just think it's an important thing to think about, in supporting this effort to try to make good projects happen, and along the way, we get some great environmental benefits with that process. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Peter. All right, anybody else? This would be your time, Mr. Trebus, so this is that, oh, anybody else part, yes.
Because Ellie is waiting very patient.
Yes, she is.
Ellie, you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
And then I can up after you. No, okay. Warriors start in three hours, so.
All right.
This economic analysis is terrific, and I really do urge us to get on with the business plan segment of this. The one thing I'd like to suggest, though, or at least to keep in our mind, is that when we are looking at the analysis of potential revenues, we do realize that there's a lot of potential uses of those revenues. When we look at the need to expand our opportunity for better businesses in town that can help with the overall economy, we have to realize that when people come up, they need good lodging, they need good restaurants, but when they do come, they're also coming to enjoy the area. And that requires us, and that's how we've been able to assist the Board of Supervisors through Placer County for almost twenty years now, that they need to have that experience when they're there. We can market to get them to come, but once they're there, then they need facilities that will help them enjoy the environment and enhance the experience that they have there. And these are facilities, not only like our visitor centers and our terrific trail system, which is probably the most highly used by all visitors of recreational facilities that are up there, as well as other recreational opportunities. One of the key elements that we've been moving toward now in the last three years is the development of a transportation vision, and that's so that when people are there, and they are staying wherever they're staying, they can get their head from that place to where they want to do something else without having to be in the automobile. This vision, of which EPS has been helping us with an economic analysis of that, talks about how is this going to be funded, and in that, it's recommended to use perhaps sales tax and TOT, which is my point being to demonstrate that there might be other things that need to be considered when we are analyzing all the revenues that are available. Another thing that's been coming forward, in fact, we've been working to prepare what the total future, existing and future maintenance costs are now that we're putting in facilities. Some of our trails have been in place now long enough that they're needing to be redone, or they're going to become a missing link in the trail system. And this is a pretty substantial cost, as we've worked with all the trail providers to figure out what those are. Again, where are those funds going to be able to come from? That unless it's from individual property tax owners alone, it has to be consideration of the potential of additional TOT funds, or sales tax, or something else. But again, the point being, to make sure we, in doing the analysis of what the best revenues are, to use for what, that we look at all the needs for revenues. Thanks, and thanks for having me for so long.
Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery.
And Ron, before you go, just, if you would, could you remind the board, our TOT is 10%. What is Incline Village or South Lake Tahoe?
South Lake Tahoe is twelve, well, 14%, 12% in the redevelopment area, or the other way around, I think that is. Incline Village is, that's all of Washto County, and they operate on a 12%.
12%.
Yeah, our 10% has been quite reasonable, and you realize, of that 10%, of course, the rest of Placer County, with the exception of the North Lake Tahoe, Eastern Placer County, is 8%. So I think there is room there that that can be considered. Plus the realization, of course, that TOT, as it is at 10%, has probably been our most continuous increase in revenue that we've had from any of our revenue sources over the years.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay. Not seeing anybody else jumping up down here, we'll go ahead and throw it up to Tahoe, Ms. Waller.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here in Tahoe. I have several comments, I'll try to keep them succinct and short. The public and yourselves were provided just the introduction and the background. It would have been nice to have had the economic development report, so we could make more thoughtful and credible comments on the report itself, not just the presentation made today. I think two years to get an approval might be just a little aggressive. I understand why it needs to be done, and could be looked at at a three-year, based on the number of public meetings themselves. It's not just acquiring the incentives for the programs. Let's see, I'll skip on that one. Page one, staff report states that stakeholders were businesses and the development community. Ms. Merchant stated that there was an environmental group, it wasn't stated in the page one that we received. Also be sensitive that there's only 13,000 full-time residents here, and if we continue to ask for tax increment dollars from some of the, a large part of the community that are retired, or the younger people that are here, you're going to make it impossible for people to live here, especially in light of what Mr. Trebus also said. The Transportation District is also going to ask for a potential tax increment increase on our property taxes. I would suggest that maybe in the future, in the stakeholder meetings, you have the general A member at large, so they can give you this same information. I'd like to thank Supervisor Montgomery and Duran for stating that we do need to get returns on the asset to the county, not just giving away our incentives. I'm not sure I understand how that whole process works. I know Tahoe is a unique area. Friends of mine are developers, they don't expect the based incentives upfront or otherwise. The public meeting information and details on some of the things that are probably in the report need to be defined to the public in more definition, like an infrastructure finance district. And when the next steps come, will an additional report be commissioned for possible future incentives to smaller businesses and non-town centers? Thank you for the opportunity.
My mic was off. I'm sorry, Ellie, is there anybody else up there?
No, there's not. Oh, yes, there is. She's coming right away.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, please introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stacy Lyons, and I'm the Executive Director of the Tahoe City Downtown Association. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for letting me speak on behalf of the Tahoe City Downtown Association today. I did submit a letter of support, and we are pleased to offer our support moving forward with the Tahoe Basin Town Centers reports. After about fifty years without development of new hotel accommodations in the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach, we do have an immediate need for new lodging in our regions. This will help grow tourism to our regions, and we support Placer County to initiate a program to bank and make TAU's available to projects that meet desire environmental and economic objectives. Your support of this program will help our communities flourish and become a stronger tourism driver throughout our entire lakeside region, increasing TOT, sales tax, property tax, et cetera. I would like to echo many of the voices that you've heard earlier today. This is something that we do need, and we don't want you to wait before this is too late, so I just want to echo my support.
Thank you. Is there anybody else up there?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, we have heard the report, heard from the public, and at this point... Okay, well, we have heard the report, heard from the public, and at this point, the Board is being asked to provide any input and direction to staff. We've heard some thoughts specifically by Supervisor Montgomery along those lines. Any additional thoughts or input from Board members? Okay, seeing none, we are thankful for the presentation, thank you for your report and your hard work. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's jump back up to the Sheriff's item.
And they did call each other this morning to see what color shirt they're wearing.
Yeah.
Which one of you is Schwartzinger? Which one's DeBito?
Getting into the agenda item.
Dad's silence.
There you go.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
I'm new at this, Annie.
Yeah.
I did mention to Supervisor Montgomery in the hallway that this is nothing more than the continued collaboration between HHS and the Sheriff's Office. So, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman Yuler, members of the Board, Mr. Bosch, Mark Jackman, Sheriff's Office. I'm joined by Richard Connect, HHS Children's System of Care. We're here today seeking adoption of a resolution authorizing the Sheriff to execute the $715,000 grant award from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program. So, excuse me. This is a, sorry, this is a competitive grant program that is replacing the previous MSP ADA grant that was non-competitive. And in collaboration between the Sheriff, HHS, and probation, we were accepted for the grant award for a period of three years. So, if you have any questions, Richard and I are here to help answer.
Okay, any questions of staff on the item? Any questions or comments from members of the public, either in Auburn and Tahoe? All right, seeing none, it's pleasure to the Board. You got a motion, Holmes, second Durand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I'm sorry, that's a roll call. And that one was actually written in my agenda, doggone it.
Oh. Durand.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Yuler.
Aye. Sorry about that. Okay. Our, our last public item, no pressure, Andy. The only thing standing between us and togos is a, our fiscal year 1415 update and a 1560 budget development overview.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chairman Yuler, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a fiscal update on fiscal year 201415 and where we stand after about six months of the fiscal year, and where we think we're going to end up in preparation for the fiscal year 1516 budget development. I'll go through this presentation fairly quickly, realizing it's in the afternoon. Requested actions for you to receive the report on the 1415 update. We'll also go over very briefly a, an update to the five-year strategic budget as it relates to the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and some of the changes that we're looking at as we prepare the budget for 1516 that are going on in the five-year strategic budget plan, and in the 1516 budget development process, and some of the things that are being considered at this point in time. As always, the budget and financial policy guides the fiscal health of the organization, the county as a whole, and we use some of these attributes to develop the budget that we're considering for fiscal year 1516. Economic analysis and long-term planning, promotion of cost transparency, and making sure that the costs are aligned into the programs and services that the county provides and into the departments that the county has. Review and understanding of budget variances, and this is primarily to be able to respond to any fluctuations in the economy as time goes on, and really understanding why those budget variances might exist, and then furthermore, to make sure that we have the correct level of conservancy built into the budget over time. Establishment and maintenance of reserves. Your Board is aware that the General Fund does maintain a minimum target policy of 5% of the operating budget as a general reserve for the General Fund. We do have that right now, about $20 million. Likewise, in the Public Safety Fund, there's also a considerable reserve there as well. And then finally, development of a spending plan supported by sustainable resources. And this is just making sure that using the five-year model, and particularly the two-year model, that within the framework of developing future budgets, that we do have a sustainable budget, where we're using ongoing revenues to support ongoing expenditures, and really only using those one-time revenues for one-time costs that the county does have. Looking at the budget that was approved by the Board in September of last year, for 1415, $797.8 million, and you can see that majority of that budget resides in four funds. About 70% of the budget resides in the Public Safety and the General Fund combined, and about 26% of the budget resides in the county's capital and infrastructure funds, the Capital Projects Fund, and the Road Fund, or the Public Ways and Facilities Fund. That's where the majority of this presentation will be spent. Looking at the General Fund and kind of where we're at, in 1415, with the final budget that was approved, your Board did approve a $401 million spending plan. That spending plan has been adjusted over the course of the last six or seven months to a revised budget amount of about $403.4 million, with some of the budget revisions that have, that have ensued since adoption of the final budget. And what we're looking at in terms of the 1415 estimated actuals, based on where we're at so far today, is that we will have a carryover fund balance going into fiscal year 1516 of about $24.6 million. That $24.6 million is made up of several components. 4.7 of it is, 4.7 million of it is made up of increases in revenue, or revenues received above the budgets that were projected, particularly related to property and other property in lieu related taxes, things like redevelopment distributions, property taxes above budget, and also the development, construction permits, and real estate, real estate transfer taxes. 19.9 million of it is related to expenditure savings, where of that 19.9 million, just under 10 million, 9.7 million is related to vacancy savings that have been, that will be accrued by the end of fiscal years for unfilled funded positions. This represents about 6% to 8% on average every year that comes over into the carryover fund balance from year to year, which is, which is considerable when you consider how many positions that the county does have. As of February 1st, about 10.4% of the total funded positions in the General Fund were vacant. 147 vacant positions out of the 1415 positions that the General Fund does have, and that's consistent with what we've seen in the past at this point in time as well. In addition to that 9.7 million in salary savings, there's 4.4 million in non-salary savings, which includes a $1.3 million true-up to the Public Safety Fund for the discretionary revenues that have been received above budget in the General Fund, consistent with the multi-year framework, where 46.83% of the discretionary revenues in the General Fund from a budgetary perspective go to fund the expenditures in the programs in the Public Safety Fund. And then, of course, the non-spending of the $5.8 million contingency. We do put a 1.5% contingency of the budget, for the budget every year that is just not spent, so that will be part of that carryover as well. So, $24.6 million. Looking specifically at the Public Safety Fund, your Board adopted a $158.4 million spending plan in September with the final budget approval. That has been since changed to about $151.9 million. $158 million does include a provision to reserves, which has gone over into reserves, where the Public Safety Fund now has just over a $15 million general reserve, that's part of that fund. Estimated actuals for 1415, similar to the General Fund, about $145.8 million in expenditures, which is resulting in about a $7.6 million carryover fund balance in the Public Safety Fund. That is made up of $2 million in revenues above and beyond budget, which is primarily from that Public Safety Fund true-up from the General Fund of $1.3 million, and an additional revenue is received as part of the Public Safety Sales Tax and AB 109 true-up growth amounts as well. And then we also have $5.6 million in expenditure savings, where of that $5.6 million, 4.2 million again, like the General Fund, is related to salary savings specifically, where 4.7% of the total funded positions are vacant as of February 1st in the Public Safety Fund, 35 positions out of 744 total positions. And then $1.4 million in unspent materials, supplies, and contracts will make up the balance of that 7.6. Looking at the capital and infrastructure funds, about 26% of the budget is in these funds. This slide just briefly discusses some of the major projects that are in those funds. There are 111 individual projects that were approved with the final budget in the Capital Projects Fund, and 74 projects that were approved as part of the Public Ways and Facilities Fund. Let's move on. Library Fund. Each year at this time, we give an update on where the Library Fund is, and where we project that it will be at the end of this fiscal year. The Board approved a $6.04 million budget for fiscal year 1415, and of that, there was approximately $450,000 that was left over in reserves that would carry over into the following year. With the $6.04 million budget, there was approximately $400,000 that was estimated that was going to be needed as carryover fund balance to balance that budget. We're now seeing that only about $220,000 in that carryover fund balance will be necessary, meaning that $200,000 will roll into carryover fund balance for fiscal year 1516. Going into fiscal year 1516, with that $200,000 in carryover fund balance, coupled with the $450,000 in general reserves available to the library, there's about $650,000 remaining. However, looking at the library, we can see that the library has a burn rate, a cash burn rate in the budget of about $220,000 to $250,000 per year, and we've seen that over the last couple of fiscal years. So, current and future budgets for the library continue to be unsustainable. We do continue to work with the library to implement the Board-approved strategic plan, which was done a couple of months ago, where we're looking at prioritizing facilities, materials collection, staffing and programming, and operational efficiency in the manner by which programs and services are delivered to the patrons of the library, and that will be forthcoming to the Board as well. Multi-year model. Just want to spend a couple of minutes on the model and kind of explain some of the changes that you're going to be seeing. Typically, as part of the model, and what you've seen in the past, is this top number, which is the estimated carryover fund balance, has been a fixed number. It's been, it's been a number that has been decremented each year by about $1 million, where we start with where we think fund balance is going to be at the end of any given fiscal year, and then basically reduce that by $1 million each year. That flows through the model, and it basically balances the budget for the General Fund in the model, meaning that carryover fund balance, otherwise known as a one-time revenue source, is used to balance the budget to a great degree. What we've done differently as part of this model, which is a conservative model, as it should be, is looked at general fund salaries and benefits, and the way that which they're budgeted in this model itself. Typically, in the past, we have budgeted, as part of this model, all of the funded positions, meaning the full costs for all funded positions are part of this model, where we know in any given year, 6% to 8%, as we've seen over the last five or six years, will accrue to salary, will accrue to the carryover fund balance for the following year based on the unspent salary and the savings in those salaries. So, what we've done is we've taken another approach with this projection and with the future year models, where we've looked at salaries and benefits, and taken where we're at today, and actually built in two components of growth. One component of growth is just standard growth, where we're building in 6% to 10% positions per year, in additional positions based on service demands that may be accrued, that may accrue to the county based on an improvement in the economy. What we've also built in is another 6% to 10% positions per year, where we're looking at the succession planning efforts of the county, and actually building in, starting in fiscal year 1516, as a budgetary augmentation, succession planning positions where we can start to get in front of the fact that there are a lot of people with a lot of knowledge that are retiring from the county, and the county could benefit greatly by overfilling some of these positions and creating cost training opportunities before, before that knowledge is lost. So, we're starting to build that in as well. That's basically where, where we are pegging the General Fund salaries and benefits. All of the other components of cost are as where they have been in the past. So, they're the full budget amount, and then there's standard growth projected in the future for each of those components. Similarly, revenues. Revenues are projected conservatively, and there's really been no change in the way we're projecting revenues. With this model, what we're trying to see is exactly what the burn rate in the General Fund will be over time, given what the pure revenues are, that is, the revenues without carryover fund balance, and then what the pure expenditures are going to be, realizing that, of course, there is a high degree of conservatism still built into the model, even though we're changing the way salaries are projected in the future. And then driving the future year's carryover fund balance as the ending fund balance throughout the model. This basically will, will help us project where we need to be today, knowing where we may end up in the future, given a reality picture, especially as it, as we look at staff, which is by far the largest component of cost in the county. That's what we're doing with the model today. In the General Fund, or in the Public Safety Fund, you can see that we plan on ending the year with about a $7.6 million carryover fund balance, which will roll to reserves to the extent it's not needed. So, you can see that that comes over, and you have a beginning in reserves. The model does project that the Public Safety Fund will be sustainable, keeping in mind that this, this model does not build in any requests that have been recently received by departments as part of the budget process in 1516. So, we know that there are some significant requests from the Public Safety Fund that will be considered. And then, and then forward where we're at with the Public Safety Fund. You can see there's still red numbers, and most of these red numbers, similarly in the General Fund, are again based on the fact that starting this, starting next year, in fiscal year 1516, and for the four years beyond that, we will be ramping up all of the calipers increases that we've, that we've talked about before, where combined, the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund will see about an $18 million hit in additional costs in the aggregate by year five. So, most of that red is driven by that, meaning we have to get in front of that.
I had a question.
Yes, Supervisor.
Andy, does, and I see your red out there, and obviously, that, that looks pretty ominous, but does your model include any upticks in the property tax recovery?
Yes. So, what we're, what we're doing with the property tax in the model is for 1516, we're building in a 2.5% increase. We're working very closely with the Assessors Office on trying to gauge exactly where property taxes may be going in fiscal year 1516. 2.5%, we feel is a pretty good number at this point in time, maybe a little bit more than that, but we certainly don't want to project that as part of the model.
Right, right.
All the years after that are 2%. Looking at the 1516 budget development process, I just mentioned continued modest increases in revenue, discretionary revenue recovery with the property tax, as I just mentioned. Proposed service delivery models that account for increasing short and long-term cost drivers, this goes to the heart of the, of the calipers increases, and also looking at, making sure that we continue to conservatively budget any increases that we're anticipating related to health benefits. Alignment of direct and indirect costing methodologies, this is where we're looking at creation of two new internal service funds in the counties to better distribute those costs to the departments based on the departments that use services related to information technology and employee benefits. Spanning information for capital and infrastructure projects as part of the fiscal year 1415 budget process, your Board did receive a five-year multi-capital, capital plan, a five-year, multi-year capital plan. We will be updating that for you as well. Succession planning, I briefly touched on that, and what that means. And another part of succession planning also is, I believe in July of this year, we will be implementing the E-Performance Module of PeopleSoft, which will aid greatly in the succession planning efforts as well, as it will provide a significant database of employee information related to employee performance and employee career planning. Focus reduction of carryover fund balance, spent a little bit of time on that, discussing that and what that means. Carryover fund balance, again, is a, is the largest one-time revenue source that's part of the budget. To the extent we can eradicate some of that carryover fund balance and free it up for other Board one-time priorities, we'll make that available to you. And then priority-based budgeting as well. We have an inventory of departmental programs and services that we've already done, we will be refining that, and then with the 1516 budget, we will be beginning to cost about half of the departments in the county, and present that information with the final budget as well. We did roll out the budget about a month and a half ago, and initial budgets were due back to the County Executive Office on February 10th. We rolled out a base rollout net county cost in the General Fund of about $21.5 million, meaning we asked departments in the aggregate in the General Fund to submit a budget that was no more than $21.5 million in net county cost. Similarly, in the Public Safety Fund, when you account for the true-ups, $5.3 million there. Again, going back to where we think we're going to end up in fiscal year 1415. Again, going back to where we think we're going to end up in fiscal year 14-15, the projected carryover fund balance for 14-15 is $24.6 million in the general fund, $7.6 million in the public safety fund, meaning just by looking at this information, there is approximately $3 million in the general fund and $2.3 million in the public safety fund that is available for supplemental type requests, other requests from the departments, whether they be ongoing or one-time. Again, we've received several supplemental requests, as you can see, $10 million in the general fund and $5.7 million in the public safety fund. We've begun the process of actually going through and vetting these, and we will be bringing back to your Board full recommendation that takes into account a county-wide approach, and then, of course, more importantly, what your priorities are, as you've indicated. Cost absorption is built into this budget. It is built in because we are taking an approach to salary savings, where we're asking departments to budget a component of salary savings, where we don't have to have that large carryover fund balance from year to year, and most departments have submitted that. And then we need the flexibility to consider one-time and ongoing supplemental requests with this. These are just some of the, in the general fund, $10.2 million in net county cost, $5.7 in the public safety fund for net county costs. These are supplemental requests. And just some of the supplemental requests that we've received. In the general fund, there's $1.8 million of that $10.2 million is ongoing, and $8.4 million is one-time. Tahoe tourist accommodation units make up $4 million of that, that's a one-time. Continuation of the road overlay maintenance, similar to what we did in fiscal year 14-15, current fiscal year, where the general fund gave an additional $1 million to the road fund for overlay. That is also being requested again for 15-16. $2 million related to Placer County Government Center master planning efforts that's currently going on. Community Development Resource Agency counter support and some PCCP administrator costs, $600,000 ongoing there. And then parks and trail rehabilitation. Again, this was approved as part of the 14-15 budget as a one-time augmentation for facilities. They're asking for the $250,000 again to continue that progress. In the public safety fund, and of course, none of these have been fully analyzed yet and we're in the process of doing that. In the public safety fund, you see $5.7 million in net county cost supplemental request, $4.5 million of that is ongoing, and $1.2 million of it is one-time. We have a South Placer capacity transfer, where we're looking at increasing the capacity of the South Placer jail to buy 180 beds, and in return, moving some of those beds out of Auburn and transferring some of the beds in Auburn to program beds. And that is a $3.5 million ongoing cost. Sacramento County Office of Education contract, you heard about that quite a bit today, and that's $1 million that will be considered as part of next year's budget. And then today's approval will actually earmark reserves to the extent that, in the public safety fund, to the extent that this, until it's considered as part of the budget process for 15-16. And then also five additional full-time equivalent deputy probation officers for the probation department as part of caseload management and out-of-county caseload management particularly. Looking at the state budget development process, and, well, actually, the budget development process and how the state is impacting it. Again, for the second year in a row, no real known impacts coming down from the state budget. We do see that the state has a trigger in its current budget that will actually be seen through as part of the 15-16 budget if things hold true, which it looks like they will be, whereby an additional $6.8 million in one-time funds will accrue to the county related to SB 90 mandates that remain unpaid at this point in time. So that will be a one-time augmentation of money from the state. And then the unwinding of the triple flip, consistent with the paydown of the economic recovery bonds. That will result in basically a very minimal one-time payment of sales tax, consistent with the true-up associated with the triple flip portion of the sales tax. And then finally, redevelopment dissolution process updates, where we're looking at in July 2016, at the start of the next fiscal year, there will be one countywide oversight board as opposed to oversight boards in all the jurisdictions that previously had redevelopment agencies. The county will manage that. Auditor Controller's Office is working very closely with the State Auditor Controller's Association and the state to make sure that that goes seamlessly. Budget development process and what your Board can expect to receive as we get to the final budget hearing on September 1st. April 27th, which is the Monday meeting in Tahoe, we will be doing a priority-based budgeting implementation status and overview as a Board workshop, just a brief workshop with the Board on that day. June 16th, we plan on bringing back the fiscal year 15-16 proposed budget and position allocation ordinance. And then finally, on September 1st, we'll be doing the public hearing and Board adoption of the 15-16 budget. With that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions by Board members?
Quick question. Andy, how close are your 2014-15 projections? Do you think they're like within 2%, within 5%? How close do you think they are at this point?
I'm sorry, look at the...
Yeah, on the multi-five-year model?
Mm-hmm.
You have your 2014-15 projections?
Right.
How close, within what percent of accuracy do you expect those to come in this year?
When we've done the model at this point in time in the past, typically, the numbers are, they're conservative, and it always comes in a little bit higher.
But like 5% in some cases, 2%?
Maybe, maybe 5%.
Other comments or questions by Supervisors? Any direction that we want to provide to the staff at this point? All right.
Bring us back something we can adopt.
Thank you much, sir. What's that?
I said, bring us back something we can adopt.
Yeah.
That's good direction.
Okay, that concludes our open session items. So we will go into closed session. Jerry?
The Board will now join to closed session to discuss those items listed on the agenda under conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. There are two related litigation items, Auburn Highway 49 Corridor Association and City of Auburn versus County of Placer. There's also one item of anticipated litigation, and the Board has also agendized to meet as the in-home supportive services public authority for a conference with labor negotiator.
Thank you.
I think that's a little tough.
The board has returned from closed session where they conducted a conference of legal counsel on two items of existing litigation, Auburn-Hyatt 49 Corridor associates and City of Auburn versus County of Placer. The board heard a report from counsel and gave direction to counsel in one matter of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. And the board also met, convened as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services public authority and heard a report from their labor negotiator. No action was taken.
Thank you. Word is in.